Okay. Well, now we will say the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Hernandez, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. This is our first meeting of the new year. And if the ROTC would like to do anything later, just let us know, okay? Thank you. Okay. First on the agenda is an update from Principal Carrie Edwards. Mr. Edwards, while we're waiting for the technology to get in place, I'd like to recognize the staff of Willby High School. Could you stand? Thank you very much for being with us this evening. And any parents or students? Okay. It's on.
Good evening and welcome to Willby High School. Before I do anything further, I'd like to introduce everyone to my administrative staff. I have Mr. Paul Drury. I have Ms. Elizabeth Hansen and Mrs. Lori Peck. Our administrative team oversees a student body consisting over 1,000 students with many cultural backgrounds.
If I could interrupt for one minute, I believe our ROTC is ready to... Are you ready to do something for us?
Forward, march. Forward, march. Colors, up. Right, face. Carrie, colors. Present, colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie, colors. Ready, cut. Right, face. Forward, march.
Very well done. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Now, take two.
Starting at Willby this year, the administrative team increased instructional time by eliminating homerooms from the daily schedule and decreasing passing times from four minutes to three minutes. These changes were implemented because we feel that the more times the students are being gazed in the classroom actually helps bring out a more positive school environment. Other changes to the schedule included moving activity days that were to be held only on early dismissal days. It is essential to teachers that teachers are, excuse me, able to collaborate on planning and instruction. And the new schedule will allow more flexibility for teachers to conduct instructional data teams. Currently, English teachers meet weekly. And in the future, we are moving forward with the weekly instructional data teams in all our instructional content. Willby High School is proud to be a comprehensive high school with many career-driven electives. I feel that the packaging of these electives could be organized in career pathways for more academic effectiveness. Currently, we have Allied Health in our JRTC, which you guys see, as a career pathway programs. We are in the beginning stages of developing college and career pathways where students have the opportunity to explore different concentrations, starting as freshmen and continuing through their high school education. Our pathways will be designed to prepare students for tomorrow's highly competitive careers. They'll also provide a foundation for the career skills needed for current and emerging careers. The preliminary ideas for these college and career pathways are business management, communications, engineering, and medical. Student-centered learning encompasses methods of teaching that shift the focus of instruction from the teacher to the student. Student-centered learning puts students' interests first, acknowledging that students' voice are central to their learning experience. In this student-centered learning space, students choose what they will learn, how they will learn it, and how their learning will be assessed. As we begin the process of moving from a traditional learning space or model to our student-centered one, we are using some of our many community-based activities allowing our students to enhance their high school experience. Listed are many of our programs that enhance our students' high school experience. The first student-centered learning experience I would like to tell the commissioners about is our video production two class. These students have taken on the challenge of producing Willby's High School's morning announcements. The students are learning how to create their own TV show while using our television studio located in the basement of our complex. They are also learning basic studio camera operations, sound mixing, and switching from the studio control room. The students are really getting to understand the grind that producers undertake creating shows, just like the nightly news. If we can click on the morning announcements underneath it. You're killing me right now. I need to attack first.
Where's Darren?
Well, it's right over there.
No. No. Okay. All right. It was a great morning announcement.
You can send it out to us.
It was a great morning announcement. Just take my word for it, okay? Another one of our student-centered learning experiences derived from our school newspaper, The Emerald. Our students really embody the mission of enlightening and informing the student body. We also have a couple of students from our Allied Health program right now to come show what they've learned in their Allied Health program. Come on. I got two to come.
All right. Hi. Nice to see you. Okay. You look very professional. Are you going to talk to us?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, they don't got to say, "Come on." Introduce yourselves.
My name is Deontay. I'm a senior in Allied Health.
My name is Marianne. I'm a senior in Allied Health.
So today, we're going to be doing an example of the Heimlich maneuver. We're not sure if any of you guys are familiar with this, but this is when someone is choking and you help them.
First, we're going to touch out what Allied Health really is. Allied Health is usually for two years, and you have to get into the program so you can sign up to be selected. And your junior year, you're basically learning like all the skills of being a CNA. One of the things we learn...
Please use the microphone, because it's being recorded, if you wouldn't mind.
So, the junior year of Allied Health is you learn the skills of being a CNA. So like feeding, bathing, doing hair and nails. And one of the skills were the Heimlich maneuver. And then your senior year is basically you're softening up your professional skills, and you also get to branch out and see different careers in the health field. So when we do our clinical week in the hospital, junior year, you really, like you do bathing and stuff like that. And then senior year, you pick your own department. My department is, I do physical therapy, and I go out with a physical therapist and help them do their physical therapy care.
And I'm in one-day surgery department, so I help prep patients for surgery.
So, yeah, basically, Allied Health is actually a really pretty good program. It helped me a lot. I actually got better. My grades and stuff got better once I got into Allied Health, and not just anybody can be in it. You have to start off with decent grades, at least, and good behavior. So it also, it changes us further better, too. So now, we're gonna do a quick skill of the Heimlich maneuver. So this vest, basically, this would be your throat, and you'll have food that goes down and you'll choke. And this is your stomach.
That's cool.
You know I had to bribe them for this. I have to take them to dinner after this.
All right. Whatever it takes.
Make sure it's not McDonald's.
Okay, so, when you're performing the Heimlich maneuver, this would be your belly button right here, and you would go right up above the belly button, and you have your wrist like this, your pulse wrist. And you go behind the person, you hold it, and push in and pull up like that to hook it up. But if you see, if you think, if you're out and you think someone's choking, if they're coughing, they're not choking. So if you see them, you encourage them to cough. But if they're not speaking or coughing, then that's when you perform the Heimlich maneuver. So we're gonna do a little...
Oh, I'm eating an apple.
Are you choking? I know. I'm not looking for us. Can I help you? Michelle, respond on the one. So you're holding the person?
All right. We're in good hands.
And usually, if someone is choking, you have to ask them if they want help. If they say no, you have to wait till they pass out. What if they pass out?
Really?
First aid protocol.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Wow. Well, we look...
Good job.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you in your fields of study.
She said she was nervous, but then we couldn't take the mic away from her.
I know.
Thanksgiving for real was an experience that was a joint effort between the students of Willby High School and the Social Studies Department. The idea was launched from a discussion in class. The students were discussing what Native Americans and pilgrims actually ate during the first Thanksgiving. The students were so enthralled with the classroom discussion that they talked to their teachers, they talked to their teachers in the Social Studies Department until hosting a dinner with all the original food from the first Thanksgiving. The night was extra special to see different parts of the Willby community come together to host an event. The Social Studies Department developed a PowerPoint, especially because in Social Studies, we have to learn something whenever they host an event. Our culinary class cooked all the food, from the stuffing to the turkey to the duck, because they explained to us that they would eat duck at the first Thanksgiving. And those of... Mr. Drury, you tried to drop duck, right?
Yup, A-plus.
Finally, the fashion design class made authentic outfits that the Native Americans and the pilgrims would have worn on that special day. Our Willby JROTC, which you just saw, marksmanship team traveled to Reading, Pennsylvania to compete in the 2018 New England JROTC Air Rifle Marksmanship Challenge. Out of the 12 teams, the Willby Wildcats took home third place, the third-place trophy. One key focus for our students here at Willby High School is for them to make the choice to want to be at school. Student choices may be built on the positive contact they have with their peers and their teachers in the school building. Positive contact occurs throughout daily attendance at school and in the classroom. Attendance is encouraged to decrease chronic absenteeism by monthly review with the attendance team focusing on students with perfect attendance during each month. The month period was selected, giving all students the opportunity to have success. We acknowledge students' diligence for their attendance by having a monthly event. The event you see on their slide is our Thanksgiving feast that we had in November for our perfect-attended students in November. The 2016-2017 Willby High School graduation rate stands at 75.77 percent. Programs that will be implemented in the future to raise the graduation rate is developing a study skill and life skills class targeted at our Willby High School freshmen.
Good.
A peer buddy program that pairs new students with a junior or senior student that is in good academic standing. Also, developing a marking period recovering program for freshmen and sophomores. This program would allow freshmen and sophomores the opportunity to raise a marking period grades, keeping them on track for their yearly class and also keeping them on track to graduate on time. Our out-of-school suspension data has decreased 21 percent from the 2016-2017 academic year to the 2017-18 academic year. The administrative team believes this decrease is generated from the team's focus on restorative practices. Willby High School has developed a responsible thinking center. RTC, which we call it, is a safe haven for students that are making poor choices at that time. Students sent to RTC have the time and space that adolescents need to move from poor choices to the correct choices that we are looking for them to make. Willby's High School Vice Principals also do a fabulous job making time to mediate and have conversations with students that have referrals, Level 1 and Level 2 referrals. These conversations give the students guidance and help students develop the intrinsic motivation needed to change the behaviors that they have exhibited. We have stated a vision for our students, which includes students' participation in classrooms, strong academics, and community involvement. Community involvement has always been an integral part of the school conceptions 100 years ago, under the vision of Stephen Willby. And today, we want to take those visions and move it forward. Here at Willby High School, our vision will always include the focus upon our students and their choice to want to be here. We want our students to make a choice that the school is more than just academics, but also their home, truly their alma mater. Finally, our last slide of the night is an event that I'm most proud of because it was totally student-led. A group of students arrived in my office one day with the idea to help the homeless in Library Park by giving away hot chocolate and snacks.
Nice.
On their own, the students decided today, raised the money, and even solicited help from staff members. Why this makes me proud is that producing, achieving students with empathy for others is what we're looking for at Willby High School. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Principal Edwards? Commissioner Vanstone?
First of all, thank you very much for a very thorough presentation. Thank you to the Allied Health kids and the ROTC for helping out. You know, a lot of the things you're trying to bring here to Willby, I think, are positive and, you know, still relatively new, so we need some time to grow into them, and we appreciate that. You know, you guys had the unfortunate news lately of some issues here in the building. Could you give us a quick report on how we're faring as far as temperatures and such in our lovely structure?
Actually, I'm going to say, we had some emails today where our teachers were saying our rooms are too hot now.
I was going to mention, it's not terribly chilly in here tonight.
Right. What happened was, we had a few rooms in the building that were cooler. It was one wing in the basement particularly. What we did is we, as soon as we found out, myself and the custodian walked the building and figured out what rooms needed to be, little help. We wrote work orders at the time, and the people came in right away. As you know, everybody knows this building was built in 1971, and I believe we still have the original heating system that's in here. So, the repairmen came in and they repaired a couple of things. We found out that the things that they repaired the first day didn't work, so we called them again the second day. And they came in the second day, and they repaired something else. Finally, on the third day, when they repaired the third thing, that's the thing that worked and actually got heat back in our building. During that time, though, as administrative staff, we talked about it, and we did not worry about uniforms or anything like that. Kids were in the building wearing jackets, hoodies, and things like that, because the first thing and foremost that we always think about is our student safety. So that is what happened with that.
Well, I appreciate that, because while I'm a huge proponent of our dress code, I'm also a huge proponent of common sense.
Yes.
So if there is that type of issue, and there's a student safety and health risk involved, obviously, you know, do the right thing. So I'm glad that eventually we got the problem solved. I'm glad the common sense prevailed.
Yes.
And I want to thank you guys. If there's ever any other issues, please don't hesitate to let us know.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of the year. Okay, next, Scott Morgan is here to answer any questions. I know most of the public should know, we are in the process of gearing up to hire a new superintendent for the Waterbury School District. And I asked Scott to just give us a brief overview of the process and answer any questions thus far. I think we're mostly interested in the timeline, Scott?
Yes.
As, I don't think you have to go through a big...
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for inviting me here tonight. I'm happy to give you an update...
Oh, thank you.
...on our process and timeline for our superintendent search. Is somebody there can adjust that, or...
It's fine. It just...
It's okay?
We're good. We have it.
Okay. All right. This slide was on the last presentation that I gave you, and it's just a reminder to everybody, pretty much, the way I think about how we're approaching this. And again, it's to cast a wide net, and we're actually doing a nationwide search. We identified a company that has tentacles throughout the country to identify, recruit a high number of qualified and diverse candidates who possess the leadership skills and abilities to deliver high-quality education for a multicultural urban community and student population. So that's sort of my guiding principle as we go through this. That's the goal. Additionally, in my discussions with anybody that I meet with, we always want to keep in mind our student demographic population. This was also on the last slide, but I want to keep this out in front of everybody so they understand the thinking behind what's driving our behavior. I went over a timeline last time. I think it was a little aggressive, but what we've done is we've refined the timeline based on the awarding, the contract to RAIN Associates. And if you want to follow along... On 12/7, I did the workshop with you. From 12/11 to 15, we actually awarded the bid, and we had a telecon with the vendor. As of right now, we're actually going through a, I call it a job analysis. RAIN and Associates calls it a job profile. It's basically the same thing, to get feedback from all the major stakeholders, to find out what is important, what are the things that are most important to you, that you think are the qualities and the competencies that we want to see in our next superintendent of schools. I know that yesterday, Dr. Rush came to the city of Waterbury from Lakewood, New Jersey. He spent the whole day with us. He met with most of the board members, and I know that Commissioner Ian Stone and Commissioner Thirio, I left a copy of the survey with you. Everybody else, most everybody else had one. Some of you have given them back to me tonight, and I will return them to Dr. Rush to get them back to him. So everybody on the board, including the mayor, will return one of these surveys, and they will use those in doing their analysis and their job profile. So we started yesterday with taking input from the major stakeholders. Today, we actually... So that happened yesterday. As of today, we actually finalized these surveys for the community at large. And basically, what RAIN and Associates did is they have an English and a Spanish version, but they also translated into an Albanian version. So starting tomorrow, these surveys are going to be available for the community on both the city website and the Board of Ed website. So this is actually my first public announcement that the surveys, effective tomorrow, will be on the websites. And again, they had English and Spanish, but based on our request, they also put one together for us in Albanian. So we're in that period now where we're communicating with people, we're taking in information. We also plan to do a stakeholder input meeting on either the 24th or the 25th. I'm not sure exactly... I'm not sure exactly what the date, it may be both dates. So, what we plan to do is have a meeting at, we haven't identified the schools, but there'll be one on this side of town, probably one at Kennedy. So, this way, the public can have access to us and ask questions, and we can provide information. But during the day, one of those days, we're actually going to meet with community groups. So, we'll certainly meet with the Teachers Association, we'll meet with SOA, we'll meet with, we haven't determined who all those groups are, because there's so many of them, and we can't meet with them all, but we're going to identify who the major groups are, and then schedule meetings that day, throughout that day, with the different organizations to have them come in, ask some questions, get their feedback as part of the process of reaching out to all of the major stakeholders.
Scott, if I may, if we have ideas of community groups that we feel are key, can we just email them to you?
Absolutely. If you have anybody that you want us to consider, I mean, there's so many communities, you couldn't possibly meet with all of them.
Right, but just the major ones, yeah.
Everybody has an opportunity to give us feedback on the survey link.
Good, okay.
But we have, we'll have to narrow those down to who we think are the most
Yep.
Critical to get feedback from, in terms of the assessment for the superintendent job search. So, the survey's been finalized. It'll be out on our web links tomorrow. We hope that by the end of the month, we would be able to finalize the job specification, which would include the requirement, what are the minimum requirements of the job that we're looking for? Are they the same as what we have now, or are they going to be different? So, that's what the RAIN Associates will be looking at and taking in all the feedback. What are we going to use as the minimum requirements for the job? Once that's determined, then what we do is, we post the job, and we'll conduct recruitment We'll conduct recruitment efforts the month of February, from February 1st to February 28th. And we have a number of different media that we're going to use to do recruitment. We're going to recruit from our local city and website, and RAIN Associates is going to reach out to the large organizations that recruit for administrative positions. So, after that closes, what happens with the civil service process will determine who meets the minimum qualifications or not. Anybody who doesn't, we notify them, and they have an appeal period to the Civil Service Commission. Once we have all of the candidates, what will happen is, RAIN Associates will use a matrix to identify who they believe are the top 10 to 12 candidates. And they'll use a number of different factors, which I'm going to go over in a minute, and the factors that I have aren't all-inclusive, they're just examples of things that they'll look at. So, they'll identify the top 10 to 12 applicants, and they'll develop questions and a rubric. And we actually administer, through the civil service process, an oral panel exam, which is scored. And based on those, and I know a lot of you were here last time, the top five candidates' names will go forward to the board for final interview and selection. The vendor will work with the board in helping you to identify, what are the questions you want to ask? How do you want to run the process for conducting an interview? So, the things that you need to do as a board, Dr. Rush will work with all of you to help you through that process, okay? If you need the help, but he's there, that's one of the things that he's, that we're paying them to do. So, he'll help you develop questions, he'll come up with ideas on what's the best way to conduct an interview, how do you facilitate that process, and then how do you ultimately identify the best candidate for the position? And then, when, after selection is over, RAIN Associates doesn't go away. They stay here to help. They'll go over the board's self-assessment survey, which he's conducting, which he's conducting with you, give you some feedback on that, and then he'll also help with the transition of the candidate into the position. And they guarantee us that if our superintendent doesn't stay with us for two years, they will help us find the next superintendent free, all they charge us is expenses. They have a vested interest in making sure that we get the right candidate. They're here for the long haul. They're not going to, we're not going to get a superintendent and they're going to walk away. So, they, because they're, their name is on the line, too. They're a large company, they believe that they have a good product and a good service, and they stand behind it, and they give us a guarantee. So, most of you have already met with Dr. Rush. I was very impressed, very knowledgeable, very experienced, very insightful person, and I'm very confident at this point that we've started the process, we're on a positive footing, and we're moving forward in accordance with this timeline and process. Okay? One thing I just wanted to share with you as a final, is, in, there's two screenings that take place. First, it's the initial screening. Once we ident, once we identify, once we construct the job specification, which has the minimum qualifications, anybody who doesn't meet the minimum qualifications, they're out of the running. Okay? They go out of the running. They have an appeal process, but basically, they're out of the running. And then what will happen is, RAIN Associates will identify the top 10 to 12 candidates. So, they'll have a rubric, and the rubric will include, and this isn't all-inclusive, but these are the things that they look at. Do they have a master's? Do they have a double master's? Do they have a doctorate? What is the doctorate in? How much central office experience do they have? Do they have one to three years, three to five years, five, you know? What type of superintendent experience do they have? What type of other administrative principal experience do they have? Maybe they have high school and elementary school, maybe, you know, did they work at the Board of Ed at a state level? Did they work at a Board of Ed? Did they work with the Federal Department of Education? So, they will look at all those things with a matrix to boil down who are the top 10 to 12 candidates who will actually go to the oral panel exam, and then ultimately, the top five candidates after the oral panel exam will come to the Board of Education for final interview and selection.
Great, quite an extensive, thorough process. Any questions for Scott? I think it's pretty clear, we, you know, know that we're here to help in any way. Commissioner Harvey?
Scott, thank you very much for going through that process, and I was very pleased with Dr. Rush and look forward to working with him. You mentioned that, you mentioned two dates in January, the 24th and the 25th?
Correct.
Keep an eye on the 24th, because I know there's some event that is going on in our school.
Okay.
At Reed School.
Okay.
And I know that was sent to all of us, and I think it was sent out to the community, because we want to make sure, if it's the community that we're targeting on those dates, that we get as many of our community to come in as possible.
That's why I didn't want to solidify the date on the timeline, because I'm not sure at this point, what, even if at a high school, I don't know what's going, I haven't checked that far yet. But even if the 24th and 25th doesn't work, we'll make it the 26th. But as soon as we identify that date, we'll let everybody know. If there's any issues with it, you know, everybody, you have my name, email, phone number, just shoot me an email, give me a call, stop me in the hallway, because I'm going to be available for you throughout this whole process.
All right. And Scott, lastly, as I spoke to Dr. Rush with the community and the community groups, I just want to make sure, because you said there was going to be some determination on who was important, who, you know, that we get to...
We had time.
Yeah, we, it's, please, make sure you get to, if you need any help with that, you know, let me know, but we got to get to these groups, because the community is very engaged.
No, obviously, you are the community representatives, and I'll be relying on you to help me.
Excellent.
Because, you know, there's so many, we can't meet with all of them.
That's right.
We have to meet with the major groups, the major stakeholders. Anybody who we can't meet, they always have an opportunity to come to one of our open community meetings.
All right, good.
And we originally were going to plan for one, they originally had planned for one, I said, no, I want two, because I want to make it as accessible as I can to people in Waterbury. We try to spread it out to make it easy for people to get to the different locations.
All right. And lastly, I just want to make sure that we utilize all of our advertising, you know, on the web, on, you know, the radio stations, the, wherever we can to get this word out.
Absolutely.
And if you need help with that, please let me know.
We have a rather robust budget for advertising.
Very good.
So, both on a local level and on a national level.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Commissioner Sweeney?
I'm Scott.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Scott, at what time, what point does the board get to review the job description specifications? I don't, I don't see any opportunity to do that here.
Well, this is your opportunity to give us input on the things that you would like to have go into the job specification. So, I'm not sure at what point that would happen.
Okay, because the last time around, we reviewed the job specifications.
Right.
Before that went out.
Yes, I have the original letter and the copy of that from the last time. Yes, I do.
Yeah, so I don't see that in the timeline, so when is that going to happen? Because certainly, it needs to happen before the job posting, but there doesn't look like there's any time.
Right, well, I...
Between the, between where supposedly the job specifications are put together and they're posted, there's nothing in there for the board to review.
I may have to schedule a special, both a civil service and a Board of Education meeting to have that done.
So, does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
To be determined.
Well, to be determined, so I, I don't want to lose sight of that. We want to see those job specifications before they go out and get posted, so.
Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Just to touch base on a couple of things. We talked about the survey that's being used, and obviously, I have it already yesterday. And Mr. Rush, or Dr. Rush, went over a few things with me in the survey, and I'm just wondering, I anticipated before I sat with Dr. Rush that this board would work on constructing that survey, but obviously, the survey is completed, so I'm assuming that the search firm designed and constructed that survey. It's probably a rote survey that they use for pretty much everything. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So, the, so this is the same survey, then, that the stakeholders will see on the website? Is it the exact same survey that the board got?
I am not sure if it's the exact one, I haven't compared them yet. But what will happen is, when they look, you've been given surveys, and you're going to give them back, and they'll have them as a segregated group, and then everybody else they'll see is one group. So, you will be looking at, they will be looking at your survey feedback through a different lens than they'll be looking at all of the other surveys that come back from the general community.
Okay. So, then, the only chance that any stakeholder has to have input into this process would be to complete that survey?
Yes.
Or is that going to happen on one of your two meetings?
Well, people can come, there'll be opportunities for people to ask questions.
So, they will have, like, I'm picturing coming to with the podium and asking a question of the search firm?
Yes.
Not of the Board of Education?
No.
Not of civil service?
No.
The search firm, okay. I'm, things running through my head from our previous search, five or six years ago, and there was discussion of this board, five or six years ago, about the requirement of a doctorate, no requirement of a doctorate. And, of course, we've had the requirement of the doctorate. We've had a requirement of a doctorate going back, in my memory, to Dr. John G. Gil-Martin, who we have a school named after, and every successive superintendent since then has had a doctorate required. And is there any chance that that might be changed? Because when you talked about the job specs, you talked about, well, is there going to be a master, a double master, a doctorate? I don't know when that decision comes forward, and I think that that's going to be an important decision. And I would think that the decision's already been made, that if we, that we don't throw the doctorate out now, after 50, 60 years of history in the city of Waterbury.
Yeah, that decision's not been made.
It's not been made, so it's still a possibility.
It's not been made. Well, I think anything's, that's the whole purpose of a job profile, is to see, you know, what are people's thoughts at this point in time?
Yeah.
In 2018, do you think that that's something that's required? You know, so you have your opportunity, you have your individual surveys, to give feedback on what your thoughts are in terms of what is important, what are the important educational experiences and work experiences that this individual needs in able to be a highly successful leader of the Waterbury Public School? Does that mean a doctorate, or doesn't? I don't know, and the decision's not been made.
So, that discussion has yet to take place?
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
Yeah. All I could tell you at this place, whoever's selected has to meet the minimum requirement as set by the State Board of Education, which is the O-93, at this point.
And the requirements set by this board in the job specification?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And we talked about, or you did, and I appreciate it, that Ray is going to come forward with 10 or 12 candidates, and then that will be whittled down to five candidates presented to us.
Correct.
So, they're going to come forward with 10 or 12 candidates after a wide net of a nationwide search, and it's going to boil down, they're going to give us, or you, civil service, 10 or 12 names. Is that correct?
They will, they will, well, we have to, by civil service rules, we have to conduct an exam. And in the past, as long as I can go back, it's been an oral panel exam that's been conducted. Even last time, I think it was 12 individuals, I think two or three didn't show. So, that process has not changed. That's the same as what happened last time.
Okay. Okay, so, the 10 or 12 names that Ray brings forward will then sit before a civil service panel, and then from those, you will take the five?
Yes. The five top-scoring people.
Five scores, right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Scott, I'm just trying to, when we did this last time, I was, I kind of came onto the board midway through, so I just want to double-check that my recollection is, one, correct, and two, kind of the same model. You touched on it a little bit with Commissioner Sweeney's conversation. So, as I remembered it last time, the Board of Education at the time sat down with, I think, the, at the time, current set of job specs, went through it a number of times, rewrote them to a degree, added things, amended things, voted on that to send that to civil service.
Is that what, I wasn't here last time.
Can anyone, Ann?
That's correct.
Okay. I would like to follow that process again. The surveys are great, and I think that the, the search firm should come forward and say, listen, this is what all our surveys showed, that, you know, the board, their surveys thought these things should happen, the public and the other stakeholders thought these things should happen, and we should take that as input into the decision of writing the job specs. But I think that final roll kind of ends here, and then we send what we hope to be the job specs off to civil service for them essentially to ratify them. I thought that was a fair and easy process last time, and it made sure that, you know, the people who are going to have to hire this superintendent at the end of the day had, on paper, exactly what they expected of the person they were going to be evaluating.
Well, I will research that further and give you a definitive answer on that, okay?
On whether that's what we're going to do this time, or that's what we did last time?
Yeah, well, I, I think that, I saw the letter that came out from the, it was the Civil Service Commission, it went through the Civil Service Commission, and then it went through the Board of Education. I saw the letters from 2011. That's how the process worked.
But it was our specs that went to civil service. They may have initiated the process and requested something.
Okay, is that what the, it went from you to civil service?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, let me double-check that.
And did it go separately, was one, Sweeney, I'm looking at you, or Carrie, did we have to do two, one with a salary range and then with a job specs, or was that one?
The salary range, we had to go through civil service with, and then it had the board...
They were two separate.
The board of aldermen.
They were two separate, two separate.
Salary, but not the spec.
Right, salary's different, okay, yeah. I will research that and get a definitive answer for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Again, if anybody has their surveys, if you have them now, give them to me, I'll get them in, but there's instructions on that form, how to return them, to Dr. Rush. But there's instructions on that form, how to return them, to Dr. Rush. And if anybody, and I know, you need a survey, right? Okay. I will, I will email one to you. Okay.
One last question, Vice President Harvey, quickly, please.
Sure. Anyone that applied six years ago and took the civil service test, are they starting, if they apply again, are they starting new?
Yes.
Everything starts new?
Everything starts new.
Clean slate?
Clean slate.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming. Do we have, do we have any members of the public who wants to speak?
Let me check the sign-up sheet.
We'll move to the public speaking.
Thank you. Wait, he's going to check the sheet.
Okay. No. No, no, members of the public are here to speak. Okay, next on the agenda is the Gear Up program, Paul White, and I see Dave Siletto in the audience, from Nagatuck Valley Community College.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thanks. How's it going?
Okay, Gear Up, how we doing?
Good, good. So, we are here just to, to approve the, the most recent MOU, or just get the Board's input and feedback from the most recent MOU that carries through our fiscal year, which ends July 22nd, 2018. This is the sixth year of the Gear Up grant. Everything's going well. We got our first group of seniors at the table right now, so it's a very exciting year. It's a very busy year for us. But really, and, you know, if, I'm sure there's other questions, but, you know, the primary duty is to just ratify the MOU to pass along to the Board of Alderman and Corp Counsel for final signature.
I, I think we'd like to know, how is it going? I mean, this is the first cohort that's been with you for five years, correct?
Absolutely, yep.
And, do we have any numbers in anticipation of how many students will be available for, to go to college and get some of the tuition reimbursement?
We do, we do. We have some basic numbers. This is Leana Cunningham, she's our Gear Up Director currently.
Hi.
She brought some small data points.
Okay.
And we certainly will come back and report out on a full set of the outcomes of the grant.
Great.
But we do have some data points just to share with you right now, and then, of course, answer any questions.
That'd be great.
All right. Pass it over to Leana.
So, at the end of the 2016-17 school year, seventy-six percent of our students were on track to graduate with our first cohorts. That's the, the students that are now seniors. Seventy-five percent of the now juniors were on track to graduate at the end of last school year.
How many students does that translate? How many students are there?
Roughly, I would say it's about, probably about, like, seven hundred students, seventy, seven hundred fifty students.
Any other questions? Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. We were all excited, very excited, when this came into place six, seven years ago, and now, the first cohort is ready to graduate. At the time, seven years ago, or six, whenever that was, it was sold to us, and, I mean, and rightfully so, that the students who were part of this program would be able to go to Central, Southern, Western, Nogatuck Valley?
So, it's the three institutions that are a part of the Gear Up Connecticut Grant, which is Nagatuck Valley Community College, Southern Connecticut State University, and Manchester Community College.
Okay, so, it's Southern, Manchester, and Nogatuck Valley?
NBCC, yeah.
And, and how did the money break down, then? I, I can't remember. I was almost understanding that it was going to be free tuition.
Yep, it's free tuition.
It's free tuition.
Only.
So, you have, we don't know yet how many, but these kids have to be in the application process now.
Mm-hmm.
So, you're saying there's at least seven hundred, possibly more? And that would, let's suppose they all took advantage of that?
Yeah.
And, and Southern, and Nogatuck Valley, and Manchester is willing, ready, and able to accept them?
Well, so, for Southern Connect, so, Manchester and Nagatuck Valley have an open admissions, meaning if a student graduates high school and applies, they are automatically accepted. For Southern, a student has to apply and be accepted, so, that will limit the number of Gear Up students that are going to their institution.
Okay. And, and, and that's in process now?
Yep.
Where everyone's, people are on top of it?
Yep, so, we currently have about six hundred applications, six hundred and ten as of today, at Nagatuck Valley, for our students.
Okay, very good. Excellent. Can you keep us apprised of?
Absolutely.
You know, when those acceptances and those commitments are done with the numbers?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we know currently of about fifteen students that have been accepted to Southern thus far, but it's still early in the acceptance process, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. I don't, I don't really have a question, more of a, of a comment. I guess I'm a Gear Up parent.
Great.
So, my son is a junior, and he's participated in the Gear Up program, and a lot of the programs that they do offer to the students, I really want to commend. Besides the scholarship application, I actually went to an NBCC meeting recently with my, with my junior son. But they really educate you on the apps that you can utilize and on the process.
Great.
Which is stressful, obviously, for college applicants. I just want to thank you guys for the resources that you do, you know, give to the students at the school, because they do one-on-one help, and also to the families as well, so, good luck.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, we're very excited about it. Thank you for all your hard work. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the Fund for Teachers Award recipients. Rachel Rodriguez-Driggs, Miriam Giskin, Chase, Sonia Silencia, Chase, Michelle Bramble-Reed, Jennifer Magnavis, Wham's Middle School, I mean, Wallace Middle Schools, thank you, and Thomas Courier-Westside Middle School. Darren?
Hi, good evening. With the change, some of the teachers that we're going to present tonight couldn't make it, so, we would like to come back to the Board and provide an overview of what the six recipients did do over the summer as a result of this Fund for Teachers program that we brought to Waterbury last year. And this is kind of a PEA, public announcement, for all teachers out there. There is a Connecticut State deadline for January 31st, where teachers can submit an application for professional development over the summer that they designed themselves, but they're interested in. So, rather than getting something-
Remember that.
-from the district that they may or may not meet their needs, this is an opportunity for them, $5,000 for an individual, $10,000 for a pair or team, to go anywhere of their choosing, as long as it applies to their classroom, and they have a specific methodology of how they're not only going to bring it back to their classroom to benefit their students, but also benefit the district. And so, our six teachers that did get the award last year, one went to Maine to, for the coastal national parks, one went to Orlando for an international literacy conference, another went to the Washington DC Air and Space Navigational Systems Museum, two went to Albania to learn, that were from Chase, because they have a high Albanian population, to learn more about the communities and culture of Albania, to bring that back to their students that they teach there, and another went to Alaska to study geology, history, and ecosystems. And so, these are all fully funded. Fund for Teachers has been around since 2001, they've given over $28 million to teachers for their own professional development, over 7,500 teachers have taken advantage. And there is a, a fund specifically in Connecticut that is funding this to the best of their abilities, so that as many teachers can get into the program.
Great.
And so, I'm urging any teacher that's listening to apply, and I'd love to have the teachers come back and tell you a little bit about how they apply this to their classrooms this year.
We'll look forward to that. Thank you. Is that, this avail, I mean, is there a website that?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. So, it's FundForTeachers.org, F-U-N-D-F-O-R-teachers.org. And the application's right online, and it's due January 31st. We have had some internal discussions through Johanna Hayes with, with teachers, without a, kind of a memo to all teachers, and we're going to follow up again.
Great, thank you. Okay, lots of opportunities. Next, Doreen Viola, our finance person, monthly expenditure report, and I guess we have quite a few handouts tonight, too.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, this is the monthly report through November, which is the fifth month of our fiscal year. I know you previously had, had this ahead of time, so if you looked at it, if you have any questions after, I'll just briefly go through some of the accounts that we anticipate at the moment to go in a deficit, and then, there'll be some accounts that will be surplus. As you know, this budget, if you go to the last page, this budget was built on the contingencies that we have to balance, and as you see, at this point, we plan on using all of the contingency, because we're showing a deficit above, and we're going to show that we're going to need the 240 and everything else. So, just so you know, right now, we seem to be on target, but we are watching every line item carefully. The teachers, right now, will go in a deficit. That could jump up a little bit larger, depending on where other accounts, as we watch closely, if they surplus. But again, because of the contingencies, many of those funds were used to support our teaching staff, and as you know, we went through many cuts to get to this budget, so we will be watching every line item carefully. Any questions?
Okay, it's pretty self-explanatory, and have we had any information, any new cuts from the state or anything that we know of?
Well, we're going to be updating you right now with a grant list, so I'm going to pass that out.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, Superintendent?
If I may, we're very pleased to launch our yearly annual reporting schedule that we've shared with the Board about. And so, we're about to present two of the topics that were scheduled for the month of January, the grants.
Thank you.
The grants presentation is first, and then, we'll be following it with a chronic absenteeism report. So, Ms. Violo will be talking about the first report that corresponds to, again, our launching of this schedule of reports that we'd like to bring to you throughout the year. She's accompanied, of course, by Ms.
Linda Riddick.
Look up. Linda Riddick-Barr, please. Thank you.
Okay, so, before you is usually a report that gets provided to the Board yearly. This is the financial picture of our grants that we will be receiving for the 2017-18 school year. I'm sorry that the, this is a little small type, but what you'll see is, if you notice, we list the state and federal grants, and we actually, this is alphabetically, and then, in the second column, F is for federal, S is for state, so you know which fundings it's coming from. And then, the accounting unit is, is the account that's charged to this grant, and then, the budget. So, the ones in black are, we received the awards already. The ones in red, we still have not. So, for some of the ones, you'll see we have an Alliance Bond II grant, which we anticipate to receive at the end of January. The Alliance grant, we are actually, in the moment, doing the application to send to the state for the Alliance grant. Now, we're, that'll be that we're in the seventh month of January, and we're just sending the application to the state. But they provided the information to us, and right now, the amount is at $19,988,84. Now, whether that stays there, I'm not sure. There was anticipation, I think I brought to the attention of the Finance Committee, that there could be additional cuts, possibly $250,000, so we will wait and see. The bilingual grant, again, is not in yet, along with extended school hours, family resource, and then, we have some new grants. These are the low-performing schools, these are for technology and infrastructure. So, above that, you'll see that there was the carryover from the previous year, and then, we'll be receiving new money. We also have the primary mental health that is not in. Oh, and, I'm sorry, the magnets for Rotella Maloney and Wham's is not yet in. We will be anticipating a 10% cut right now. That's what the schools are holding to, until we receive a final award, and then, we'll make the adjustments. Primary mental health, Priority Schools is looking at a 15% cut.
Mm.
That is, that also will be, the application is going in with the Alliance grant, Priority Schools is part of that, when we submit, so that'll be getting submit, but we did receive a 15% cut. Summer school is a 7% cut. And then, we also have some of the Title I school improvement programs. As you'll see below, these will end, some of these will end, year one will end September 30th. So, overall, we're looking at, with all the grants, at $75,503,870. Now, some of these grants are two-year grants, so when you see carryover, it means it was the second year of that grant, or, or, just to make it a little clearer, if you want to look at, like, IDEA, you'll see IDEA Section 611, you'll see the accounting unit at the end is the year, so 1719, it's a two-year grant, so you'll see that it's ending next fiscal year. So, this is the newer grant, at the $5 million. And then, you'll see the one below it, the carryover, the 1618 tells that that was the year, that this will end in June, and that was the carryover amount, because some of these grants run multiple years. Any questions?
Commissioner O'Watt?
One, thank you for your time, Doreen, and I thank you for the time to speak with me earlier in the week. I did have a couple of questions. First of all, you noted that the Alliance application is only going in now. That's not on our end, that was because we were late getting it, based on the?
Yeah, we had to wait.
Right, I want to make sure that everybody knows that it, that's not us not getting it in, that it was us getting it.
Oh, yes, thank you.
If I may, the application was-
Just came out.
-provided to us now, and they have a deadline of the 19th.
Right, so, I just wanted, for the public to know that.
The 19th of January?
It wasn't that we, yeah, it wasn't that we were late in doing anything.
No, we had to wait.
You probably just got it.
We did.
Right.
We got it on the 20th, actually, December.
To your point, it probably had a two-day turnaround.
Close to it.
Yeah. The other question that I had is, I, I only see the magnet operating grant for Rotella. Am I just not seeing the other one? Am I?
No, what happens is, is it's lumped together now.
Oh, so, they're all there?
They're all there.
So, it's Rotella, Maloney, and Wham's?
It's all three, yep.
Okay. And then, the only other question I had is, so, where you have the, the Title I's, you have, they've actually already ended then, because they were done in September of 17?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, that was all, I just wanted to make sure. Actually, my biggest point was that it was not us that were late applying.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Thank you, Madam President, for you. For the dollars we have not received that are stated for 2017 through 19, how has that affected our use of those, well, we don't have the funds, but how are we getting by without having that money in hand?
Well, this, if you're talking about the Title I basic, yeah, because these really are just coming in. This is something that just came in. So, I mean, they have, they have a narrative, and they have a plan, nothing's been done until we receive the money, though.
So, we didn't scrap anything?
No.
Because we didn't have it, or?
No, no. These just came in. These kind of just were awarded, you know, the application didn't go in that long ago.
And then, we have the few you mentioned that are in year two. I'm curious what our plan is going forward. Maybe it's not a question for you, but with year three receiving zero, is how I read that, what will happen to those programs in the case of like, the Title I improving basic programs at the various schools? So, if those grants run out, or timeout, what do we do then?
Well, these grants, these grants were competitive. These were some additional type of grants that you're looking at down there. These Title I improving basic programs, they are not really part of the entitlement grant itself of Title I. These were like additional type for schools in need of improvement.
But they paid for something.
They did.
So, do we stop improving because we don't get the money?
Well, no, what they did is, I mean, they have their plan for the first year when they applied, and they go through that plan, and we spend the money. They get the projects done, or the programs done, or whatever needed to be done, and then they applied for a second round, and they were awarded.
Okay. But my point is, if it's an established program that we're trying to run, but the funds are no longer coming in, is that now going to be on our nickel to continue those programs?
I took a look at some of these expenditures, and a lot of them were on computers, and the ones that may have had a one-salary person, they may be able to roll that into the regular Title I because they still are identified as a focus school. So, if it's just one part of that, we may be able to continue it, because a lot of it was on things that are sustainable.
Okay, I'm still here in May, or could be here. I'm just, and we've brought this up in numerous meetings, where grants are here today and gone tomorrow, but my point is, are we then going to be footing the bill to continue these programs?
When I took a look at it, because there's only four schools, and they seem like they only have one salary person, there's a strong possibility that it could be tied into Title I, the regular Title I. But not knowing what the Title I will look at as far as the entitlement in two years, I can't say definitely, but there's a strong possibility, because they are focus schools, and because we do have to set aside money for that, that will be carried into that. And because most of the money was spent on computers, it'll be a lot easier to just take one person, rather than, let's say, if they hire three people. So, it's probably, it's a strong possibility. It's just hard for me to say definitely, but I don't know if the Title I grant will be cut two years from now, but there's a strong possibility that it will.
Exactly my point.
Yeah. But pretty much, more than likely, it will be. It's just hard for me to say yes, without knowing what that federal fund will be.
I don't think you really, you tried, but I don't think you really answered my question. And, Madam President, I think it's something we need to look at in the future.
Well, I mean, I do think, very specifically, if there's no money, and we can't roll it over into Title I, though whatever that's being funded now will not be funded anymore.
Well, I find that hard to believe, seeing one of the positions we just funded under Title I is a sole person. So, that's my concern. We're good, that's not going to happen. We're going to continue to pay for this out of the operating budget. I will guarantee it, and this is, this is what we bid off when we decided to use these funds. So, the cloud is getting darker, is what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Vice President Harvey.
Okay. Thank you. Just a quick question, or two questions, actually. Carl Perkins is the homeless. Is that, what is Carl Perkins?
No, McKinney Vento is the homeless.
What is Carl Perkins, is my question?
It's for the high schools. It's like a technology manufacturing, and, I mean, I don't know the full details of it, but...
It's for supplies.
And teachers.
If I may, it funds supplies for, in the areas of technology, manufacturing, things that'll be complimentary to the curriculum.
Got it, okay. Next question. Help me to find where, what category, the money for DPAC, parent engagement.
Title I. All the way down.
Yeah, I see Title I, yep.
It's inside there. It's a set aside within Title I. The big part, the $12 billion?
Yes.
It's inside there. It's a set aside within there.
Okay, and how much do we get normally? How much is there?
For parent involvement?
Yes.
We set aside $166,000 this year.
166?
Yes. I don't know the exact number. I can, when we finish, I can give it for you. It's in my package here, but about that, yeah.
Thank you. All set. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your hard work. Okay, next, go ahead. No, you go ahead.
I'm going to ask our chief academic officer if he can have his colleagues, our ILDs, to join him as we present this report on chronic absenteeism.
Nope, maybe they're coming. Carrie's got them, yeah, they're getting them, yeah.
So, as we get settled, I just want to thank the board. Thank the board again for having this opportunity to come forward and have a schedule to present data to you, some of the most important things that we look at at Central Office. Tonight, we're looking at chronic absenteeism and discipline data, specifically looking at suspension data, and historical trends, and what's happening currently in the district. The team with me up here tonight will take it away in a few minutes, but, you know, both of these data items are something that are associated with our district data team. It's also something that we discuss at the school level, embedded in school improvement plans and the district improvement plan. Exciting, exciting professional developments happening this year, working closely with Wellmore and other agencies, and specifically with our own internal departments on social emotional learning and chronic absenteeism. We want students in school as much as possible, but we also want students to be safe in school. All right? So, we've done a series of trainings up to this point. It's part of the presentation. I don't want to give it away yet, but it's district-wide, and it's something that's really taking off, and the data's showing vast improvement within the district. So, from here, I'll give it to Michelle, and she'll take it away.
As Darren alluded, to better support our administrators in understanding the root causes that lead to chronic absenteeism and suspension, we, as the group of ILDs, had a district initiative for administrator training, so that the principals would learn about the topic of social emotional learning this year. Professional development was rolled out in August. There was an initial training on what exactly social emotional learning is, the model that we're using to teach emotional intelligence, and we rolled out professional development on a trauma-informed district, explaining the support, how to support students who have trauma. Those trainings are happening monthly, and there are also embedded professional development that we're doing, and we're working on monthly with our professionals, and every week that we're in our schools. So, what you see here is the actual CASL model for social emotional learning. CASL's the Collaborative for Academic Social Emotional Learning. They're the foremost nationally-recognized organization. Their mission is to like, make evidence-based social emotional learning a part of pre-K-12 student curriculum. For us, SEL is the process by which children and adults are acquiring and applying skills necessary to understand and manage their emotions, achieving positive goals, showing empathy, maintaining positive relationships, and making responsible decisions ultimately. Emotional intelligence is the pillar of the CASL model that you see up here. Those five pieces of the emotional intelligence show that teaching students about self-awareness in red will ultimately lead to better self-management, and understanding that emotionality, and how you can better manage your emotions. In the lower green quadrant, you see that the social awareness, and teaching students how to understand their social surroundings, is going to help them embed or make relationship skills. Both of those quadrants ultimately affect responsible decision-making for all students. The next slide is the mission that we've used in our district vision to support our growth in the area of social emotional learning. We clearly celebrate the fact that all of our classrooms are comprised of students with diverse cultural backgrounds and experiences, but we recognize that students come to us with different levels of motivation for engaging and learning, behaving positively and performing academically. So, if we can recognize that those social emotional factors are the drivers or the limiters as to how children learn, we realize it's incumbent upon us to use strategies to engage our students in meaningful learning, but we also have to ultimately assist them in understanding how to manage their own emotionality. This next slide, briefly, is the six goals that we have chosen to utilize to monitor progress in regards to students acquiring social emotional learning within the district. They very simplistically are, one, about effective professional development. The next one is about monitoring our return on investment, being more effective systems so that we can respond to exhibitive behaviors in proactive settings, and allow students the ability to learn the pro-social behavior, developing SMART goals, so that not just the children are accountable for their actions, but the adults are a part of creating learning situations for them, articulating systems of support with our outside agencies, and lastly, needing to connect with family engagement, so that we're building capacity within our community, so that we're engaging our school families as partners. The last slide that you see in front of you is really the premise for all the teaching that we're doing currently, right now, regarding social emotional intelligence. The ultimate goal in teaching emotional intelligence is about empowering students. We're explaining to the adults now, the neuroscience that's, you know, regarding the cognitive development of students, and how that impacts their emotionality. For us, all behaviors have an A, oh, you actually can't see that, an A, a B, and a C. It's really the beginning, and the middle, and the end of a behavior. And you can see here that between the stimulus and the response, there's that brief second in time. It's our goal to be able to teach children about that emotionality at the antecedent of their behavior, so that they can better afford themselves the ability to work through the behavior by being effective communicators.
Now, as we move into the chronic absenteeism portion of this, this does relate to the social emotional learning, because all of these aspects become part of what it takes to help our kids get to school, stay in school, and be part of our school communities. The slide that's up now is a statement from attendance workers, who has done in-service workshops with us over the last few years, and some statements about the research. You have seen this before. The research and experience also shows that when we turn around chronic absence, we can turn around the trajectory of a student's academic career. In previous presentations have shown what the effect of chronic absenteeism in kindergarten, and how that affects the third-grade scores on standardized tests. We showed you what it was when it was the CMT, how later on, that same thing affected, the CAP, and so on. And we can see those same things now, as we go into smarter balance. Just briefly, for public's note, the chronic absenteeism is the total days of student attendance over the total days of membership. So, we're roughly at the 83rd day of school now. So, to be chronically absent, you would have had to have missed 10%, so essentially, eight days or more missed so far this school year translate to someone who's chronically absent. Then, from there, we could go into levels of severity that are above that. Now, in previous years, we've asked, been asked about root causes and challenges. We've talked, this is by no means an exhaustive list, but a few of the things that we have come out from having the meetings with chronic absenteeism teams, talking with students, as we talked about social emotional, another big part of it is actually talking to students about their attendance, why they're not coming, what's going on, those things, and getting back answers. Some things have been childcare responsibilities, meaning care for other siblings. If a sibling is sick, parent has to work. Sometimes, the older sibling has to stay. At the ages where students are responsible for their own transportation, if they miss the bus, there are few transportation alternatives. Wintertime, we've had the passable safe sidewalks, delayed openings. We'll show you a little slide about something that happens with our delayed openings now, and knowing this is very much more controversial, the engagement. We have to do work on the relevance, as well as the rigor in our school, but relevance is something that, at times, keeps our students from attending. Not liking school, quote-unquote. Reason that's there, again, is because, at times, when asked, that was all that a student said. Trying to capture what those, what that really means. Part of that's the relevance, part of that's not feeling they're learning, and sometimes, not feeling connected to the school. And the overall, most important thing is about how we build that social emotional piece. We want to make sure that our students are having, having the right mental health support, so they're getting out of bed in the morning, that we're dealing with other avoidance issues, school avoidance issues, and some of these start even from the lowest grades in school. So, those are the causes and challenges that we continue to work towards to improve chronic absenteeism. The next slide shows the trend that we've had. We have been able to knock down the chronic absenteeism over the last five years. We still have a lot of work to do in this. 16% is better than the 19.8%, but of course, we still want to do more work with that. Next slide, and as I know, we want to look at the numbers. This is where we're looking at what happens in our grades, as well as at our schools. As you see, we have kindergarten, a high chronic absenteeism. Then, it peaks up again in our middle school, and yes, goes astronomical in the high schools. And, as director of the high schools, absolutely, it's something that's a problem, something that our teams at each of our schools continue to work on, where we're trying to find those causes, where we're going out into the, doing the home visits, going out, looking at four kids, trying to track down what's going on, why they're not coming to school. And, we can't make moves on the other issues that we need to act down, so unless we get our kids in the building. I do commend our attendance counselors for the work that they do in trying to chase down our kids, but it's one of the areas that will, we need the continued community support, as we've talked about previously, to continue those things happening. We need the work at our, in our churches, at the dinner table, everywhere we can, our peers supporting one another about getting to school. So, these are the numbers for currently, currently, at this point, as of 82 days, we are at 18.2. We do expect that to continue to drop, because as they continue their efforts, we make students fall off the list. So, for example, if we have a student who's at eight days now, and we work with them, when we get to the 91st day, they technically fall off this list, but that's not where the work starts. We continue working with them, that they continue attending school beyond that. The next page that we're going to talk about, that the slide is, is the individual handout page that you have, which Ms. Buckley will talk about, a little sampling of what's happening with our two-hour delays versus regular days, and things that, again, other things that we have to educate our community on to improve these numbers.
Thanks, Paul. Again, this is just a sampling. We went into the current data from this year, and went over a two-hour delay, what happens to attendance on a two-hour delay versus a random full day of school. So, the data taken from the two-hour delay was on December 14th. So, as you can see, if you compare across the board, the full day was December 19th. The difference in the attendance is pretty clear. From 69.7% on a two-hour delay, 69.7% of the students are in attendance. On a full day of school, at that same school, Bucks Hill School, 93.9% of the kids. And as you go down the list, again, it's pretty obvious that the two-hour delay makes quite an impact on our students' attendance. And I think you have to go back to the root causes. Parents have to go to work. They can't be two hours late for work. They have to get to work. So, sometimes, the students in the middle and/or high school, siblings, cousins, neighbors, et cetera, have to stay home and stay with the children. But that has always been our battle. We want the kids in school. If we can clear the roads, obviously, we want the kids in school and learning, but it does make an impact on our attendance. Some other information that I ran today, thank you to Mr. Zero and his tech department. I requested from the Family Intake Center, how many students have been enrolled in the Waterbury School District due to the hurricanes in Texas, Florida, and Puerto Rico. So, he was able to run for me the K through 8, the number, and we have 173 students currently enrolled in K through 8 due to the hurricanes that happened. Of the 173 students, 47 of those students are now considered chronically absent. So, there's a disconnect somehow with, I mean, for obvious circumstances. They're setting up households, they knew addresses, they have to get clothes, uniforms, et cetera, et cetera. But that equates to 47 students, or 27% of those students are chronically absent to date on our 82nd day of school. And again, it goes back to, what day did they enroll? How many days have they been enrolled? And then... And then the math will dictate if they're chronically absent or not.
Excuse me, did you say 47 out of the 173 are out more than eight days?
Yes.
Forty-seven, okay.
From the day that they were enrolled.
Gotcha, okay.
Not necessarily eight days, but from the day they were enrolled.
Gotcha.
So when we look at the previous slides, that makes an impact, but as Mr. White indicated, as more time goes on in the school, we will decrease those numbers. But it does have a direct impact on day 82 in our schools. And the next slide, Paul, thank you, the strategy. So again, I know we've gone over this presentation before. We have our outcomes, our steps for monitoring, and people responsible. So we use data to understand school attendance and what our challenges are. We have chronic absenteeism teams that meet on a regular basis, and they use the trend data to establish students, whether they're in Tier 1, Tier 2, or Tier 3. And that would include your moderate to severe students. And also, we are having principals and the CAP teams really look at the at-risk category because if we can decrease the number of kids who are at risk, we will not have kids sliding over to moderate and severe. We monitor the process again. We have a multi-tiered approach, and the emphasis is on prevention and early warning. Our monitoring steps include the CAP team organizing school-wide strategies, conducting self-assessment, defining clear roles and responsibilities, and we adhere to norms in regards to meeting regularly and also having a standing agenda. The people who are responsible for the outcomes and steps are our chronic absentee members, administrators, teachers, school social workers, and any other teachers or staff who want to be directly involved in assisting students and families attend school on a regular basis. And this is all occurring 2017 and 2018, and did occur last year as well. As you can see, we have another slide with outcomes, monitoring, and people responsible. And again, the outcomes are to connect families and students to the school and have them understand the reasons why they're considered chronically absent and determine which students are at risk for being chronically absent. And again, we have our Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3. Tier 1, and what our interventions are. When a student is absent, we have our automated call, go out each and every day to each student enrolled in the Waterbury Public School. We also have follow-up with the parent, teacher, notices, communication, et cetera. Tier 2 is for our students who are beginning to show a pattern of attendance problems. So we take a different approach for students who are in the Tier 2, and we conduct home visits. We refer to community groups. We have buddy and peer, excuse me, buddy and peer support groups, attendance contracts, wake-up calls, incentives for school improvement, et cetera. Each school develops their own unique set of Tier 2 interventions. And Tier 3 are intensive, and again, that's continuously meeting with parents, wraparound services from the community, support group meetings, administrative meetings, and school-wide monitoring. And all of this, of course, is the administrator's responsibility to oversee the attendance and that students are attending school on a regular basis. We also obtain our data from Power School, which is new to our district this year. Pam?
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. I'd just like to look at this same slide for a minute and just go over some of the things under the outcomes with connect families and students to resources. We have our family resource centers that we have been cut by one center, but we are building another one up and adding some resources to that. We have the peer mentoring going on in quite a few of the schools and buddy systems where there's nothing nicer, everyone loves the gym teacher. So when a child comes into school and wants to see a friendly face, somebody that they know, that they can connect to, that gym teacher is a great person to have at the front door, meeting up with them. As both Paul and Noreen have said, we definitely see trends or common causes as to why the children aren't coming to school. A lot of them are as simple as they have doctor appointments. A lot of our younger parents, first-time parents, don't realize the seriousness of getting the children to school. And that is our job to educate them and how important it is. The weather is such a variable. As Noreen mentioned, I have, and I'd love some of you to even walk into one of our CAP meetings because there is tremendous amount of work going on in those, in all the schools. I have one principal that charts daily the weather under every single classroom, every single child, what, what the percentage of that classrooms was compared to the weather. And like Noreen's schools, mine went everywhere from 73% on December 14th, which was a two-hour delay, all the way to 97% in the same school when it was sunny out. And there are many, many, those of us who were born and bred in Waterbury know the terrain. You understand why some of those things are happening. Now, if you look at the Tier 1, 2, and 3, middle section here, it's really a multi-pronged system that we need to get the children involved in. We have that Tier 1, as Noreen said, which is when we start our comprehensive notification to parents about their children and their attendance. All the way to the Tier 2, where I know of one school donated to another school alarm clocks. They gave them umbrellas so that these children would have, the Walker School seems to be the ones that have the most problem with the attendance. If a child is right on that border and they have to walk a long distance and mom has to go back and forth, that's very, yeah, it was when we started really digging into it, we really noticed a difference in some of those schools. But this one school who had very good attendance did a fundraiser, donated umbrellas and alarm clocks to this. So there's a lot of community service feelings going in between all of them. And then if you're looking at the persons responsible, the attendance counselors will meet on a weekly basis. Unfortunately, that's most of where in elementary, they do go in once a week, and we're very lucky to at least have that. We know that this is the single most critical variable to a child's education, and that would be, you know, not being able to come to school. Thank you. The next one is basically looking at our Tier 3 monitoring, monitoring in the middle here. This is, our goal is to end, totally end Tier 3. We want to see that we only need to go to Tier 2. We're working very, very hard on that. We use the attendance works, which we've shared with you in previous presentations. It's basically a preventative paradigm where we need to work together. We're working with the families, we're working with the communities, the schools are all working together, where the teachers know each other. There are so many incentives going on. Right now, you can walk into an elementary school and see a football bulletin board where you, with every day that you've got perfect attendance, your football goes down lines, whatever those lines are on the field. Okay, they go down those lines just to see if they make a touchdown. You can tell I don't understand football, but whatever it is. There's another one that I understand a little bit more, and that's Candy Land, where they can go on that, so I do follow that, and a little easier thing. We know that the truancy is a major factor with low achievement. We also have to educate the children. There is no reason why when you're, and we've had quite a few of the nursing staff go in and speak to the children, that they, as little as five-year-olds, that they are taught to make sure their personal hygiene, they're washing their hands, making sure that they know those things, and to give them a sense of worth and understanding why they have to come to school. Asthma plays a huge, huge part. I know at one point, when I was a principal, I had 30% of my students with asthma. And so it's, it's, it's good to have the nurse and the principal on board, making sure that all those childrens, children either have an emergency personal care system or they have a plan in place that if the child doesn't have their inhalator or inhaler or any of the other medical needs that they need, what is the next step? So that's about it. Paul? Wendy, okay, Wendy, thank you.
Good evening, Happy New Year. I would just like to introduce Jackie Davis, who is our leader in residence and has been instrumental in implementing restorative practices, not only here at Willbee, but other schools throughout the district. So I would just like to begin by going over some of our discipline data. Schools have done a tremendous job this year in reducing in and out of school suspensions. I just wanted to make note that there should be a negative in front of the 21.7, negative sign. So if you, just look at the data very briefly, when you compare year-to-date, so as of December 2016, there was a total of 4,467 in and out of school suspensions, 2,204 in-school, 2,026 out of school. As of December 31st of this year, there was a total of 3,712 in and out of school suspensions, 1,942 in-school, 1,778 out of school.
Still too high.
But we have had an overall decrease of close to 17% when compared to last school year, which is a decrease of 755 incidents. Our in-school suspension is down by close to 12% at 11.8. That's a decrease of 262 incidents. And our overall out-of-school suspension is down by almost 22%, and that's 493 incidents. So the next couple of slides are just the legislation. So in 2015, Public Act 15-96 was implemented, and this basically indicates that preschool, there is no out-of-school suspension for preschool, it's in-school suspension only, and that for kindergarten through grades 2, it's in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension is only permissible for acts that are of a violent or sexual nature that endangers persons. So that are, those are offenses that fall under fighting battery and sexually-related behaviors. Then for grades 3 through 12, all suspensions must be in-school. Out-of-school suspension is permissible if the administrator finds either the student possesses a danger to person or property, or previous disciplinary offenses have led to suspension or expulsion, and they need to really look at an out-of-school suspension. So some strategies and interventions that have led to this decrease, the social-emotional training that has been going on in district has been instrumental. We also have done restorative practices and basic school climate training. Joanne Freiberg has come into the district and provided all secondary schools with the four days of training. Teams have been trained from the middle and high. That same training is going to be conducted in January with elementary teams. The other, and I'm, I'm going to have Jackie just share a little bit. Mr. Edwards did illustrate in his presentation, the 21% decrease in the Willbee suspension as compared to last year, and mentioned the restorative practices. And I'll have Jackie just very briefly hit on a couple of, you know, strategies and interventions that restorative practices entails because it's really about building relationships with the students, with the staff, with the community. Some of the other strategies and interventions that are listed are, are things that we have been doing and continue to do with the Dylan's Wing for Change, Central Office Collaboration, peer groups, peer mentoring. So I'm just going to turn the mic over to Jackie to speak briefly for a few seconds about the, about the restorative practices, and then we'll take any questions.
So restorative practices is not new to our district. Our behavior technicians were actually trained in restorative practices maybe five years ago and have been using them extensively for mediations. However, most of our use of restorative practices have been reactionary as opposed to preventative. This year, that has been different. With the training in SEL and the training that the staff did with Joanne Freiberg, we're looking at how restorative practices can change the culture of our buildings. I think our support staff have been doing a wonderful job in terms of responding to incidences in our building by using restorative practices. And generally, what that means is instead of when a student misbehaves, we're not looking at it as they just broke a rule, but we're looking at it as they broke a relationship, and that relationship needs to be restored. And so I think over the last four or five years, we've been doing a good job with that. But we need to extend that to building the culture of our buildings to one of helping our students to build positive relationships so that we're not just using it as a reactionary tool. One of the fundamental principles of restorative practices is that we, as human beings, work better together, respond to change better, are happier when people do things with us and not to us and for us. And so the design of this professional development has been that the administrators are working with their staff to see how they're already using restorative practices in their buildings, in their classroom, with their students in the hallway, and in what other areas they can implement those practices now without any more resources, without any more trainings. What else can you do to implement some of these principles of building relationships? And so I think that's a huge step for us because we're not looking anymore to be reactionary, but we're looking to be more preventative.
I just want to make one point that make sure, of course, sometimes when we look at reductions such as in suspension, it can be the assumption that we're ignoring issues. And a lot of this work around restorative practices around all of SEL and all of the units we're doing right now. It's about trying to stem things before they happen, work with students to lessen the severity of bad reactions. It's about learning who they are and what their triggers are to prevent them from becoming bigger things. We want these numbers to continue to go down, but we are not trying to do this by ignoring issues. So that, that I want to make sure we know hesitantly, none of our administrators are ignoring issues, are still enforcing our, our rules. We are working more collaboratively so that our students can thrive, be in the building that they can learn.
That concludes our presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think us, some of our members would like to ask some questions. Commissioner Vanstone, and then Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you.
Commissioner.
Where do I start? First off, it would have been nice to have this prior to, four seconds before the presentation so we could be more prepared. But as I go through it, some clarification I want to get because my honest opinion is we've done a lot of work to create excuses for the children. When I, it wasn't a joke. The Waterbury data sheet you're showing, is that telling me percentages of chronic absentee students? It didn't have a legend on it, so I wasn't sure what that was trying to tell me.
Yes, that is percent of chronically absent students.
By definition.
Yes.
So between seven and eight out of 10 students at State Street in Enlightenment are chronic?
Specific to the students who are at State Street and Enlightenment, we've always talked about the issue of habitual truance. There is a psychological pattern regarding habitual truance, and typically habitual truance does get worse. Unfortunately, a lot of the students that we have at Enlightenment started already by third grade as having a habitual truancy problem, and it is not for lack of trying. However, it is part of the reason typically students get sent over to Enlightenment school is because they're not able to either deal with the academic portion of their day or even deal with the emotionality of whatever trauma or whatever they've had. But that habitual truance, it has remained in effect.
And I, I'm not surprised they're the highest in the city.
I understand.
I'm not saying that.
I understand.
But that's a big number.
It is. And, and we are working, Ms. Areola, myself, and Mr. Arroyo are working very hard. We're utilizing the same attendance counselor. I will tell you that, you know, one of our conversations has been, the supports that come with truancy now are no longer in place. Typically, the supports we used to have, there was different agencies that we had supporting students and, you know, going out to homes and working with children. Those have lessened. So we're working very So, we're working very hard with a couple of different agencies right now, talking about physically going out and picking kids up at their house to try and bring them to school. And that's very, that's been a very, very difficult issue for us. But, we are, we are working on it. Weekly, they're in that CAT team. They're trying extrinsic motivators, but we all know that extrinsic motivation is not what's gonna work. It's the autonomy of kids actually wanting to be a part of school. So, it is, it takes a lot of psychological work, a lot of counseling. It is exhaustive. I will tell you, it's actually down, it's down almost by 10 to 15% at this time. Still, not massive, but, you know, this year, last time, I believe we were at 90-something percent at one of the schools.
Now, I know we're trying to reach out like at Crosby, and I think we're unofficially doing it here, is like the academy setup, which I'm a big fan of. I don't know how that changes your numbers, I'll leave that to you guys, but thinking outside the four walls of a classroom, we gotta start exploring that more. I mean, they don't want to be, or they don't want to be in those four walls. Maybe they want to be energized in another way, and I don't think we do that. And we certainly need the new superintendent, whoever that may be, to embrace that.
Along those lines, one of the state initiatives is the mastery-based learning and more personalizing. Those are things that we want to explore. How do we get students to work on things related to the curriculum that they're interested in, that they can express their mastery in other ways? So, that, that is along that line.
Those two medical students here today, I would be willing to bet they're not on this chart.
To Mr. Vanstone's point.
Pretty easy bet.
Did you see Career Academy's number?
I did.
And the difference between?
And Wham's.
Right. And Wham's is, obviously has a specific theme, but Career Academy, Inter-District Choice School, we get that. However, I believe it's around 11%, whereas the other high schools are over 30. And so, obviously, you're hitting the nail on the head there.
All right.
If kids are interested in school, they're gonna come.
How about when I look at, I guess this on the left here are, not our K to eights, right? So, what is Rotella? Well, Rotella's, again, a little bit on the special side, right? So, they're low. Regan is low, Maloney is low, Carrington is low, that's a K to eight. Even Wendell Cross, for that matter, single digits. What are they doing that the other schools aren't?
I can speak for my schools, which in that list were Rotella and Regan. They're, they're working very hard. The thing I noticed, because I've done the same thing myself, Regan is very small, but yet we're talking percents here. They don't work on the incentives as much as just the hard-knock school of, you know, talking to the parents, getting those kids in. That's one of the big differences I can see. Rotella, I don't know. I can't say other than that it's a magnet school, you know, servicing everyone else. But, Regan, you don't see the incentives there. And it's just that, back to basics, you're supposed to come to school, I want to see you, the parents are brought in, do you understand this, and making phone calls constantly.
Sounds like they took away excuses. Now going forward, and again, I probably would have a lot more questions if I, suspensions. Mr. White, you must have been reading my mind when you gave that final commentary at the end, because I was well-prepared to, and I still will, say that I'm a firm believer that these numbers are going down because we lowered the bar. And, I liked the intervention. We've talked, Martin Luther King event last year, we sat and talked about it in your seminar you gave to the children, which was very good. But, I still feel we lowered the bar. Keep going with the programs, you know. I find it hard to believe that we saw these percentage changes over one year with programs that teachers maybe were trained in, but they didn't master them a year while practicing and learning at the same time. I just struggle with that being the reason. Part of the reason, sure, but I still feel we lowered the bar, so.
Just when I had looked at and disaggregated some of the data from last year, for 16, 17, there were a little bit over 800 out of school suspensions for skipping. So, that's a school policy violation. So, when you look at using restorative practices, so, instead of a student skipping class, it's about building the relationship and meeting with the student. Why, what, the main question is, what is going on? So, it's approaching the student in a different, non-confrontational manner. So, when you have 800 suspend, out of school suspensions for skipping, so we want to try to attack those, those issues and those infractions. And I spent quite a bit of time kind of really looking at the data. In high school, out of school suspension for skipping was, was the, a big, a large infraction. So, we're really looking at the data and spiraling down and trying to develop some targeted interventions to really help students and foster good relationships. Yes, we want, we are, we expel students, we still enforce our policy, but it, some of the infractions, a lot of the restorative practices and the social emotional learning are having an impact when you're looking at some of these infractions.
Okay. I just have one final comment. As far as the high schools with three out of 10 students chronic, Commissioner Theriot, I think we just found one of the main reasons why our scores look the way they do.
You always say that.
That's what I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Jason Vanstone.
If I could direct your attention back to the Waterbury data page. I'll save my comments on State Street and Enlightenment, as he stole them. I think Mr. Schwartz, when he points to the high schools, makes a good point about the two schools of choice catering a degree to what the students like. I looked at it differently, though. Those are also schools of choice where parents have to step up and do something. And we're all nodding, and no one ever wants to say it, because no one ever wants to be a bad guy, but it used to be parents just understood school is important. And I don't care if it's too hard to lay. I don't care if it's flurrying out, I don't care you're going to school today. I didn't like school. My kids don't like school. My kids go to school every day. It's not an option. So, I don't know what the magic bullet is to get parents to care, and I'm sorry, it's your guys' job to try to figure that out. But I don't think we can have any discussion about chronic absenteeism without a parent discussion. You talk about building relationships. Two people need to be involved to build a relationship. I can't relate to you if you're not relating back to me. So, we need an active and interested person, whether it be the student, the parent, the grandparent, the guardian, whoever is the adult in that kid's life, active engage coming back to us. So, if you look at the traditional high schools, we have one in three kids chronically absent. You don't have the data here, and I'm not necessarily asking you off the top of your head. So, if I can assume that, you know, we're looking at it nine, 10, 11, 12, there's some fluctuations, but, you know, the average 10th grader, so we're still talking about one-third. What's the promotion rate by a percentage to 11th grade?
I'd have to look at the ballpark. Our ballpark is 75%. Because as that, at that 31%, again, some of those students do fall off the list as the rest of the year goes on. They can do, they do have opportunities for credit recovery, either through our online platform, or once and only once during their high school career, they are allowed an attendance appeal. And that, and again, I want to stress that that is once during their four years of high school, that they can have an appeal. That's a meeting with the family, that's where a parent is there, and with administration, that if they were able to regain their credit outside of their absences, able to complete the work, that they can regain their credit for that year. And again, I want to stress that they only get one per, per their entire high school career. But, yes, it does relate directly with their, their ability to go on to the next year, and ultimately to our graduation rate.
So, they, so, I'm chronically absent, I can do my one appeal during my high school career. So, let's say I utilize that my freshman year and I'm out. So, I go to my sophomore year and I'm chronically absent, and it comes to May, and I go running to someone, or my mom does, or more likely, probably one of you go running to them and says, "We need to do something here. Here's a whole bunch of online stuff, we can try to get you back for your credit recovery."
There's the summer school option. They can't recover the entire year. They can recover a few credits, but not, not an entire year. Then, now, taking the same hypothetical student, now going into junior, they have their seven credit course load, and then they would have to take additional courses online in an attempt to get back to be a true junior.
So, there is the possibility or pathway, though, to get to become a true junior in your third year, even if you're chronically absent your freshman and sophomore year.
It's a long, long road, but yes, it is possible.
All right. So, fast forward another year, can I do it my junior year, Tim?
Chronically absent.
I'm gonna cut you off, because it doesn't really matter.
No, I'm not, I'm trying to, I'm trying to play it out correctly. Again, I don't believe you'd be able to make up all of your classes, because again, even with the online platform, you still have to complete the work. You have to, it has to be checked by our coordinators, and they have to pass it, so, and there are certain courses that you have to pass in order to graduate high school. So, it does go on.
Real briefly, so, chronically absent is two days a month. You could be out two days a month, you could probably pass all your classes, it could happen, you could graduate, run on time without even taking summer courses, that could happen. You could become chronically absent two days a month, that's it, that's all you get, you'll have 18 days by the end of the year. So, technically, you probably could graduate on time with no summer courses needed, if you were smart enough and did the work to make up for it. And back to your point about running in May, you know, the point of the chronic absenteeism team is not to go running in May, is to prevent it all the way through. Typically, by May, kids that are chronically absent, they're secure their place in chronic absenteeism for the year. Hopefully, prevented several before that, but to your point, you, you could be chronically absent every year and graduate if you passed a course.
And I'll stipulate everything you said is true, but I would also postulate that the people who are really talking here aren't the two-day-a-month kids. That's who I'm talking about. Sorry. So, maybe it's, I'll give you 5% of these kids are your two a day, and sure, maybe they could be straight A students, so, we're still talking 30%. You know, one of your first slides talked about relevance. Is school relevant to me? If I can game the system and do the minimum work, and four years later, still walk out here with my fancy cap and gown, if I care about a cap and gown, I can do it. So, is that relevant? Commissioner Vanstone talked about excuses, and I know that's not what your guys are trying to do here. Although, sometimes we put you on the other side of the table, and we say, "Why are these terrible?", and you need to make an excuse. And not that the excuse is bad, but you gotta give us some kind of answer. But, these numbers are horrifying, you know, to put it lightly. And I imagine if we cracked open this report 30 years ago, it wouldn't be like this.
Well, they could quit school after 16.
And it would probably be because parents were doing more of a job. So, I don't want to just dump on parents, and I don't want to dump on you guys for excuses, but no one could be excited with these numbers. Over to suspensions. The happy news. So, we've been working on chronic absenteeism, according to this, for, what is that, five years or so? 2012, 2013. How long have we been actively doing restorative justice and actively working to knock down our suspension rates? Is it just two years, three years?
I believe we've been working for a number of years.
But specifically with these practices that we're touting now for knocking these down?
The restorative practices, like Jackie had mentioned, the behavior technicians were trained a number of years ago, approximately five years ago. This year is where we truly made a district initiative, an effort to have teams trained from every single building in this district to take the strategies and interventions back to their building level, safe school climate teams, and infuse those strategies and interventions into their, their building level practices. A lot of schools have, after the training, I've had amazing feedback. One building actually did a PowerPoint presentation, they trained their entire staff, just in circles. So, there's, there's different techniques and strategies, there's circles, there's peer mediation, there's conferencing, there's many different techniques. It's actually, the restorative practices piece is two full days, and the basic school climate training is two full days. So, Joanne Freyberg was gracious enough from the state to come in and provide that training. The elementary training is coming up January 22nd, 23rd, and 29th and 30th, and it'll be actually hosted here at Wilby. So, we really made that a priority this year, along with the social emotional. And a lot of the feedback that I had gotten from the administrators is the social emotional presentations in conjunction with the restorative practices.
Okay, so, in just over a year or so, you guys have been able to knock off 21, almost 22% of out of school suspensions. All right? And in almost five years, just to tick over 3% chronic absenteeism.
I mean, I would say you're looking at percentages versus percentage points. So, your math guy. So, technically, we went from 20% to 16%. So, it's 25% reduction.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, so over four or five years, we've reduced it by 25% or a four-point percentage point.
But here, you've done it in one year. So, you're still four times better.
I would say it's over a course of the year. Thank you. We appreciate that.
So, my question is, though, because it's not just a compliment. So, that begs the question, are you guys just so much better at fighting suspensions, or as my fellow commissioner somewhat alluded to, we can make these numbers better on our end with a stroke of a pen?
One of the components of going in and teaching the social emotional intelligence is not letting the tail wag the dog. The end result ends up being the exclusionary punitive component of out of school suspension, which nobody ever wants to get to. The goal is helping adults and students understand the level of emotionality, that we all control our own emotionality. And to be able to identify that emotionality and either seek the adults that we've put in place to support you, to de-escalate you, but to ultimately become a better effective communicator, because that's really getting you ready for the job force, the college ways. It's, you have to be able to effectively communicate. So, that was the major push behind the social emotional intelligence. The numbers that you're seeing on the suspension comparison data chart also, just so that you know, are by the numbers of incident. One of the newest reports that we're, we're trying to run right now is the recidivity report. We're trying to look at the, there could be certain students in here that account for multiple of those suspensions. So, what we're trying to get better at, and Mr. Zuda's done a phenomenal job with creating all these new dashboards for us, we're trying to be better at being able to identify the students who are most in crisis. So, that recidivity rate, we want to know what percentage of the population is that recidivity rate, so that when we talk about, is this working for 95% of our students? That, that's important for us to actually disaggregate and know.
And I, I think that's important information. I would, and I would actually argue as, you know, if you look at 4,400 in school and out of school, or 3,700 in school, out of school for half a year, I think the first thing you see, well, that's a lot of kids. But then, if you think about it, I'm gonna assume this is also on that 82-day breakdown times 19,000 kids. You know, that's 1.6 million student days. So, we're talking about less than 2% of the population. So, I think if it's important to look at that...
Inclusive of, bear with me, programmatic, we have programs within our district that support students who have different levels of emotionality, different school buildings, you know, Enlightenment and State Street. This is inclusive of everything.
Right. So, I guess what I was saying on the flip side is, while these numbers look high from a percentage of our overall population, you know, the chronic absenteeism scares me more than this. And I forgot where I was going with that sentence. But, so I don't, I don't, you know, you look at these numbers immediately, and you're like, oh my goodness. But, you know, and I don't have the other urban districts, but we're probably adder better than most of them. And I'm glad we're seeing improvement. And I'm glad we're seeing improvement, but I don't want it to get to the point where we're, where we're making more excuses. You know, I know Wendy said, you know, and I, and I get the idea that, you know, for saving school, we don't want to kick them out another day of school, that intellectually doesn't make sense. But at what point, getting back to relevance, are rules relevant? You know, the last time you guys came to us or maybe the time before, swearing at a teacher wasn't important. There wasn't a high enough thing to merit something. And a couple of us almost fell off our chair, because if I, as a high schooler cursed at one of my teachers, that would have been the end of the world, not, not a phase one infraction. So while I, I appreciate the work and I want you to keep working, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, as important as numbers are going down, I want climate to improve. I want behavior to improve. You know, in a data-driven world, you can't, you know, no one cares about, but that's really what we should be doing, not knocking down suspensions, but improving behavior. And I will stop, I apologize.
Okay. I would ask commissioners not to repeat anything that was already said. If you have additional questions or comments, Commissioner Terrio.
Well, you pretty much took all the thunder away, but that's okay. I was glad you were able to speak without being interrupted. At the expense of being confrontational and critical, which I've been accused of, I would like to compliment the team on looking at this particular problem and analyzing it in an educational therapeutic way. It's true, so often we respond with a knee-jerk reaction to something that could have been avoided or could have been rectified through an apology. Sometimes we don't do that. Sometimes in the heat of the motion, we get emotional and we want to, oh, let's give them a five-day suspension, let's do this. And that just escalates the problem. So I'd like to compliment all of the ILDs and the team for looking at this. Actually, we have looked at this about fourteen years ago, uh, maybe twelve. Commissioner Stango and myself were on the mayor's task force for truancy and chronic absenteeism, you'll remember that. And back then, when we were looking at the number of absenteeism, thanks to Will Zuda, I don't know if he's still here, but thanks to Will Zuda's report, and I'm sure you've seen that report, which is the one hundred and eighty day report that shows each school and the absenteeism and the number of average days per absent in each school. Back in that time, let's say ten years ago, uh, we had schools with chronic absenteeism of twenty-eight days per student. Now, if we look at ten percent of one hundred and eighty days, that'd be eighteen days. So a school that has twenty-five percent would have thirty-five days absent. A school that had thirty percent would have fifty-four days absent. A school that had thirty-five percent would have sixty-three days absent. Now I'm saying that because as Commissioner Vanstone has pointed out, you know, if you can't, if you're not there, you can't learn. You're absolutely right, we need to do things to get them to come there, but when they enter this high school area, it is a time of drastic, drastic change in their lives. And I'm not condoning that and I'm not making that as an excuse, but they need to get to school, they need to be there. Now, at what point did we stop counting tardies as, three tardies as an absent? Do you remember what year that was, Mr. Zuda? What year we stopped counting tardies? Four or five years ago, so that would be right about within this guideline, right? Two thousand thirteen? So I'm just trying to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges, because there were hundreds and thousands of absences that were divided by three, that were, tardies that were divided by three, that were converted into absences. So that number.
Uh, just one thing along that, particularly with that relating to high schools, uh, even though they're not counted as absences, tardies can result in you losing credit in an individual class.
Okay.
So I'll make sure you're aware of that.
Thank you for that clarification. So I'm, I'm, you know, I'm always particularly interested in State Street and the Enlightenment programs because, you know, you know, we're always brought up, you know, the, the Pal Lee's and, you know, we got these kids, they're jumping out the windows and we got all these kids. You know, if you took two hundred kids and seventy-five percent of them out and any given day, you only got fifty or sixty out of a population of two hundred. I know we need to save the seats for the rest of the kids, but you know, my point is that, you know, kids aren't there. Kids aren't there at State Street and the kids aren't there at Enlightenment. Maybe Enlightenment is a little bit better than State Street, but because of the nature of the students, because of their pathology, because of their individual problems, having been the principal of the Enlightenment School for three years, I know from whence they come. I know them. They call me on the street, Yo Terrio, and they still call me that, you know, and I give them a big hug right back. And they tell me, "You saved my life. You're saving people's lives by what you're doing here. All of us are too." So I like the restorative practices. I like being, uh, taking the kids aside, giving them a little timeout, giving them some time to reflect, giving them some time to get back on the track. I like that. I like the careful monitoring at the ask risk kids. I like the proactive steps that you're taking. I don't know what more you can do outside of physically going to their houses and dragging the kids out. And I don't think some of them would come if you even went there and dragged them out. Some of them would. Parents struggle with it, kids struggle with it, parents are pulling their hair out trying to get their kids to the door on the bus and to the school, you know? I know they're struggling with it. But I, I like the philosophy, or I like you looking at the pathology of the problems. It does, in fact, and you've said it clearly, the problems begin in the home. If they begin in the home, we must end them in the home. And we need to get more social workers, more people out to parents, parents into the schools so that they can know how important school is. If they're not there, they can't learn. As I said before so many times, our scores in the high school were dismal in the single-digit numbers on the SAT scores in math. We do a pretty good job with the elementary schools, then we climb up into the middle schools and then it's terrible in the high school for a number of different reasons. I had one other note here. Elimination of the tardies. So I'm, I'm, I'm critical, but I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful that doing diligence and doing due diligence of the things that you're doing will result in more chronic attendance. I am concerned, as other board members are, that we have lowered the bar. You know, I've said it before and I'll say it again, there are times when we need to draw a line in the sand and when the student crosses it, it has to result either in an in-house suspension or an out of school suspension. I read the, I read the new rule book, some of it, and it is, uh, at some points very vague in terms of when we suspend and when we don't. So I think I've said enough about it and, uh, let me reiterate again, congratulations to the hard work that you've done and the diligence that you do. Keep it up, but we must maintain tremendous discipline in our schools. I think kids would come more often if they had stronger discipline in the schools than having less. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Harvey?
Thank you. Where is the data for the arrests in the district? Um, I'll direct that to both Wendy and Jackie.
I don't think that was part of the report, was it?
We can get that to you, Commissioner Harvey. Um, one thing we're working with, let me get this out of your face. One thing we're working with, with the, uh, police department is also looking into when , uh, students are being pulled out, um, but being diverted to other programs and when there is a choice not to arrest, when they do get to the police station, looking at what those numbers are. Last time I talked to Jackie, we were down this year, but we can get you that specific number, um, hopefully tonight.
Okay, so just know that when you give this report, that, that those should, that should be included, uh, in the, in the report. When you talk about discipline, out of school suspension, in school suspension, arrests, that should all be included in, in the report.
We'll, we'll add it in, in the future for you.
All right. Next is, um, and this is particularly for you Darren, stay where you are, and the ILDs, that we are not doing enough in this district when it comes to parent involvement. We need to do a better job. We seen it from the report, um, that how important it is to have our parents involved. And I'm not beating up on the parents, I'm saying we need to do a better job, um, in terms of family engagement, keep data, um, you know, it's not, family games, engagement is not just coming out to programs, okay? It's also involving them, as we have said, chronic absenteeism, getting them involved with their kids' education, all of that. So we need to do a better job. And I'm hoping to hold a meeting of the ad hoc committee, um, and have some proposals for the district, but I think we need to, to really start focusing in on that and what we are doing and have some accountability about what we are doing in regards to family engagement, so that, I'll leave that there, okay? Lastly, um, when, when you mentioned, not making excuses here, because school is school and school's in session and if we don't cancel school, then you need to be in school. But the walkers, when we delay school, they're still affected by that. If it snows like it did a week ago, we still, we had to cancel school Friday, if we talk about safe sidewalks, those sidewalks are in shovel, kids walking in the street, no one's reporting it, we need to empower, I think I had that, uh, quote in the paper, we need to empower our parents to know that they can call and report it and also our school crossing guards. If they see a dangerous situation, they need to make those calls. And I think a number was supplied in the paper. All right, but we really need to look at that. If we really are looking at safe sidewalks, then we really need to look at what we can do to improve upon that. And I bet you tomorrow, when it's raining and we got all kinds of water all over the place, I bet you that's going, well, I shouldn't say that, I guess we're being taped, so I won't say that. But, but we really need to look at both the walkers and when it's slippery out, we delay school, they still have to deal with that. You know, so, so just throwing that out. And, and lastly, after my complaining, I really appreciate all the work that you're doing, all the data that you're gathering and all the work that you're doing, particularly with chronic absenteeism with discipline, and, and I thank you. Thank you for the report.
Commissioner Awad?
I just had a couple of questions. One is, as far as restorative ju, uh, the restorative practices go, has anybody looked at what is the impact of those practices on the students that don't need restorative justice and the morale of the teachers in the building that are asked to change the manner in which they're used to interacting?
I think the, the manner in which we're going about implementation is, is new for the district, where we're rolling out this, um, approach where we've trained teams and the teams are taking those strategies and interventions and weaving them into how they can be used within the building. We are not mandating that staff use it. Um, the staff that have been trained and have, uh, brought the information to other staff, there's been a very positive response. I've had, um, received emails from teachers saying they love doing circles, they'll start off their, their class with a circle. We start off our school climate committee meetings with a circle. So it's just an icebreaker, we're not mandating that anyone has to use those strategies or interventions, but the, the feedback that we're getting is very positive and, um, the teachers that have reached out to me like it, the students like it, um, you could use circles in academics. So it's just another approach, another strategy. I'm not sure, because it's not something that we're mandating, um, how we, other than, it's a strategy and it would be reflected in a decrease in, in an out of school suspension because we're looking at building relations, uh, relationships. So instead of just a very punitive approach, it's more restorative. So, uh, Jackie, what?
Um, yes, I'll give a sort of anecdotal experience that I've had with restorative practices here. Um, so like I said earlier, we've mainly used restorative practices for tier two and tier three interventions to respond to a problem. Last year with the school-based aversion initiative, we were able to take a couple of classrooms and see what happens when you use it as a tier one intervention, meaning something that all students are involved in and that it's more in terms of skill building. In one of the classes at North End, the teacher sent me floods of emails and I think I might have shared some of her comments with the board when I presented last time, that the students absolutely loved doing circles because it was about building relationships and there wasn't any other point in their day where they had the time to just build relationships with each other and with teachers. And one of the things that the teacher noted was that the students were upset that they were only doing it in her class. They're like, "How come we're not doing this in science? How come we're not doing this in our English class?" And so unfortunately, they were only u, um, utilizing that technique in that one class. But from her experience, she said the students welcomed it and they loved it. And I guess she even kind of used it as a bargaining chip throughout the week, saying, "Well, if you guys can't get yourself together, we're not gonna do our circles." And that really impacted them. And so we do want to get to the point where we're not just reacting to, um, conflicts and using restorative practices, but that we're using it to build that culture.
How about, how about its receptiveness at the high school level where you have older kids with much more ingrained behavior patterns?
Um, well, I'm glad you asked that because there was another, uh, group here, they had a kindness club, um, where they use circles. And they were able to use it, I think it came out around the same time as that show, Thirteen Reasons Why. And so we use that topic as sort of a jumping point for them to experience what the circle experience was like. And the first time, with them being teenagers, the first time we went around the circles, there was a lot of passing because in a circle, you have the right to pass and not comment. And the first time we went through it, there were a lot of students that chose not to respond, but then as the pro, the process sort of went on, a lot of them became very engaged in using the circle process. So it is a universal tool that can be used at every age. I think initially, our younger, younger students will be more receptive, receptive. Of course, our adolescents, they rebel, that's what they do, but I have seen it work with them. And I remember in one of the trainings that we went to, one of the questions that I asked is, how do you get to the point where you, um, create a culture where fighting is not your main concern? You know, I'm, because one of the, the struggles or the frustrations that I had when I was a behavior technician is it felt like we were always responding to fight. And they said restorative practice is not used, is not meant to be used to respond to fight. It's meant to build that type of climate where that's not the only option that students have to deal with a problem. And so it's teaching them before they get to that point that there's a conflict, that there are other methods to deal with disagreements. And so that's one of the things that we would like to, um, further explore in our district, how we use that as a tier one intervention.
And I just had one other question, as it relates to the absentee, uh, issue, when I look at the amount of absenteeism in the high schools in junior and senior year, what is the cor, or have you, or can you, and maybe this has already been answered, but the correlation to the graduation rate, so that when a kid is starting his junior year and realizes he's got no shot? so that when a kid is starting his junior year and realizes he's got no shot, if he showed up every day for the next two years of graduating because he doesn't have enough units, so he just throws in the towel and stops coming. What is the relationship to that, to that high thirty, thirty-something percent as opposed to the graduation rate, which I think is in the, in the low seventies, right?
We're moving mid to high seventies now with the graduation rate. So there is some correlation with that. What's been happening, what previously happened at Willbein, what's been currently happening at Crosby, for example, has been the recupative academy. And that has been for the students who made the mistake in their early years, but whether, whatever the life circumstances or issues were that created that problem at the beginning, I call it the light bulb going off at the start of junior year. It's working on a plan with support from a case manager, behavior tech, to work with them on doing their classes plus doing additional classes to try to get back on track that they can graduate. Over the last two years at Crosby, that had brought, added three and five percent in the last two years to our graduation rate because those are students who had started off junior year or senior year off track for graduation. And it's put them back on. I can't say offhand if it was exactly a chronically absent, but usually the profile for the student, because the other half of that program is looking at the profile for students, look at why they've been absent, what was going on, whether it be the birth of a child in their home or family circumstances, things that, there was a specific thing that could point to, not a behavior circumstance, that they, as I call it, the light bulb going on to move them through. So that's, that's one of the things we've been using in those two schools to work on that. For students who, it does correlate to those students who realize they're not going to graduate. And we have to continue, whether they move on to adult ed or job corps or some other plan because while we want them to graduate from school, we ultimately want every one of them to be productive parts of our community. So we still have to try to work with them about a plan going forward.
So it raises an interesting question about a census at adult ed of kids that actually belong in their senior year back in a district high school. So maybe that would be a place to look to see how many kids have left early and gone down there. And the other thing I would just ask, if it's an easy thing to give, is just how many kids are using ed annuity and how many of them are actually successful in moving, you know, what's the degree of success in that making a difference? I know one in two is not going to help, it's, it's the consistent use of it and making it happen. So it would be interesting, I think, for all of us to just know what's the success of that program.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, this has been a very robust conversation and I think gave us a lot to think about. I really appreciate all your hard work. And I think looking at best practices and continuing, continuing to look at the data is very important. One thought that I had as you're discussing what we, what are the hot, are there particular hotspots in Waterbury? If you look at the, the schools that have the highest, maybe there's something we could do to focus on those schools with the highest percentage and really drill down. Maybe we need to put, you know, help get older kids or volunteers to walk these kids back and forth to school. I'm just saying that. But, you know, who knows? I just think we have to start looking at the data, maybe it's a particular neighborhood, maybe it's a particular, you know, housing project. So if we could kind of look at that, because the community really needs to be brought in and help solve some of these problems. So thank you very much. Yes, Superintendent.
I just want to thank the team for your presentation. It obviously generated the kind of conversation that has to continue to go on, given the public school system that we are. To the board, you know, it's simply that we are committed to continue to bring you the data, allowing us all to examine what it's, what it says and committed to developing the strategies and refining the kind of direction that is going to provide improvement and a change in terms of outcomes. And, you know, that is really the, the kind of work that we are engaged in. I just want to make certain that you know that the presentations that they come along during the school year will have the ability to have this kind of thing. We also recognize that some refinements can be done, so we appreciate the input that has been provided and hope that over time, it'll be exactly what you need to make the decisions that you need in terms of the roles that you have. So thank you again, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Will Zuda with the new calendar for 2018, 2019. Would board members like, like this electronically, the report that was just given? Okay, I'll, I'll make sure that you get it. Good evening, Will, how are you?
Good evening, thank you. Hopefully they tire you guys out, I don't want to have any more new questions. So in front of you, you guys have two calendars for the school years 2018 and 2019, 2019, 2019, 2020. Some quick talking points that I put together to discuss with you guys. Calendar was reviewed, revised, and discussed with Mr. Henry and his cabinet. There's nineteen members of that cabinet, we've gone through maybe four or five times, four or five meetings where we discussed different options, looked at the calendar. We, after that, we brought it to WTA and saw union presidents, they reviewed it. And today we're here in front of you guys and for your review. Some quick talking points regarding the calendar. First day of school, August 27th for 1819, 1920 is August 26th, kind of consistent what we've done over the years. You look at the professional development schedule, it's everything in light green. So you've got seven half-days, five full-days which are outlined in light blue. You have two full-days which are new teacher orientations, you'll see those in the beginning of the school calendar in August. Holidays are highlighted, and holidays and recesses days are highlighted in pink. You have about eleven, average about eleven holidays that are earmarked on those calendars. Winter recess, Monday, December 24th to Tuesday, January 2nd for the 1819. And then the 1920, the holiday falls on December 22nd to Wednesday, January 2nd. Spring recess is April 15th to the 18th. And the 19th is that Good Friday for that 1819 school year and the 1920 school year. It's April 6th to the 9th and the 10th is the Good Friday. Each of those calendars, we have 182 school days, so you'll notice that there's a total of 182 student days. We average about six snow days over the past five years. So when we look at this June 7th, most likely it'll probably fall on June 17th for that, the 19th, 1819 school year. And June 9th, most likely will probably end around June 18th in 2020. There's a large enough buffer at the end to protect us against the end of the month, all right? I also looked at some surrounding towns. Region 16 was the only other town that had a published 2018, 19 school calendar. They have the same start date as us, the winter break would be the same as us, the spring recess, and most holidays would fall on us. There's a couple other holidays that they celebrate that we don't. I looked at region 15, Wilkit, Watertown, Nogatuck, they don't have anything published for 1819 or 1920, so I couldn't really compare them to see if we're all on the same page. I did look at Westport and Norwalk, they, for 1819, they have the same dates as us, so it seems like it's kind of the standard out there for 1819 school years. And obviously, we have to make adjustments, we'll actually bring it back to you guys if we need to make adjustments as we move forward because these things change, right? They're living documents, there, there's always constant change on them. In the past, you asked me to identify Muslim holidays and Jewish holidays. They fall on June 4th, the upcoming year, May 24th and June 4th for one of them, wait, I'm sorry, June 4th, 2019, and August 11th, the two Muslim ones that are heavily celebrated. And the Jewish ones are the September 10th to September 19th. We traditionally don't take them off, but I wanted to bring it to your attention in case you guys wanted to discuss them, okay? That's pretty much all I have as far as calendars, I'll take any questions.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Hi, Will.
How are you? I'm going to put you on the call list, so.
Thank you. So I noticed that you did a search of the surrounding areas and last year, the city of Waterbury was the only school district that had a full day before Christmas break.
Good for us.
No. No way.
Mr. Henry tasked us with that and we have some answers for you.
Right, so could you look into seeing if we're going to be doing that in the 1819, 1920 and maybe make it uniform to make it a half-day?
The logic, the reasoning behind not doing it this year was because they fall on Friday and there's a few days prior to the Christmas Eve. So in the 1819, there's, it falls on a Friday, so I think, let me look at it real quick so I can talk to you.
It's on a Tuesday.
Yeah, it falls on a Tuesday, so there was plenty of days, we have that Monday off. The following year is it falls on a Wednesday and they, they're off Monday, Tuesday, so it's four days off prior to. That was the reason. We looked at surrounding towns and the majority of towns are not doing it anymore, it seems like, but there are a few that still do it, yes. So, but, you know, like I said, this is a document, if you guys, whatever you guys would like to change, we'll open to it.
Any other, Commissioner Manstow?
He's probably going to ask this, but I'm going to ask it. I see we're back to professional days on Election Day? That's probably not a question for you, but. Last year we skipped having professional days because it brings a logjam to the schools. So I don't know if we want to.
Election, no professional development day, it shouldn't be.
It says PD.
It's a mistake then, I'll fix it. I'm sorry, yeah, you did.
It's only 365 things here. And the only other point was, is Mr. Henry, for, for you to know the reason, and Will cut it off because he knew I was going to ask about the Muslim and Jewish holidays. I don't think we officially said the Jewish holidays, but the Muslim holidays, we said we would overlay the calendar. And although they came to us and asked, it's not a day off. However, no major events, no major tests, no major field trips, et cetera. And we thought it was a nice compromise with the community leaders when they asked. So that was the reason we do ask that question.
We appreciate it, and so we'll take that into account and make certain that we're respectful.
Will already has highlighted those, so we just have to always flow it down to remind teachers, but.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Will.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Sweeney and then Commissioner Therry.
Will, is there a reason that professional development has to be on Wednesday?
Traditionally, over the years, I mean, middle of the week, it seems like I think we've hit the most input. If you do it on a Monday or a Friday, you might not get higher absenteeism, so.
That's a whole different, that's a different problem, I mean.
You don't like Wednesdays?
No, because if we're only going to have four days of, of classes in a week, I want the kids to have those four continuous days. You're breaking it up, you get two days and then they're off and then there are two days again. It takes a half a day to get kids' attention back. Any teacher will tell you that about a Monday.
Those Wednesdays are half-days, the green, so the kids are in?
Couple of them are, are full day.
Yeah, the blue, right, or the majority of them are half-days, the green, the light green.
Even the half-day, I would rather see that on a Friday or a Monday, a Friday on a half-day. I just can't see breaking the week up like that for kids, breaking the continuity, I can't. I disagree.
We've gone around three or four times, and you're right.
I'm sorry, through you, Madam President. You're right, they used to be historically Wednesdays and I think there were a couple of years we shifted them to the beginning or the end of the week for that same idea. It's better to have four consecutive or four and a half consecutive days of teaching and learning as opposed to two, the half-day. And then you always know the day before the half-day, there's, you know, no homework given, or the day of the half-day, there's no homework given. So the thought process was at least to try to alleviate that as much as we could. You know, I'll leave it to the educational experts, but that seemed to make sense.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it, yeah. You guys prefer Friday, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
For Fridays, okay.
If I may, Madam President, when you guys, everyone over from that corner of the room went attendance, we're talking teacher attendance, I imagine, correct?
Correct.
Don't they care about their professional development?
We expect them to be here to teach every day and we expect them to be here for the professional development days. If that's an issue, that's a different issue and needs to be handled differently. But the fact of the matter is, we're impacting kids by sticking it in the middle of the week.
It could be both students and teachers, we'd have to look at it, I mean, I don't.
Students, we're fighting on our own, we pay our teachers to show up. And then we pay someone to teach when they don't show up. So, and I actually meant to ask that during the previous presentation, if we could get a very similar chronic absentee issue document for our teachers. I would love to see that. But I am wholeheartedly moving forward or backwards to the beginning or end of the week for PDs.
Okay, yep.
Commissioner Therry.
I would be supportive of a half-day before the Christmas vacation also. I think it's important, I think it's a little thing, it's a little perk that we can give the kids and the parents and the teachers. It doesn't come out of our hide and I think it's a good thing. We did it for close to 100 years, it never hurt anybody. Now all of a sudden, we're, you know, we're concerned about when it's going to happen, whether it's a Wednesday or a Friday. I don't care when it happens, I think the last day before the Christmas vacation should be a half-day, just my opinion.
Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Regarding the half-day before Christmas, Will, if you can get some kind of a report on what other districts do. I was under the impression that other districts stopped doing half-day before Christmas. I know it's always Thanksgiving, if you can, if I can see that.
Yeah, we did it, I don't have the numbers in front of me, so I don't want to, I don't want to learn anything out, but we will, we will present it with you.
And the other question I had was, for the last couple of years or more, we've been talking about a common calendar throughout the state. Are we still working toward that goal or have given up on that? I guess the biggest question would be, would be vacation-wise. And because, it's the April vacation comes to my mind. Some districts have it a week before us, some are the same as us, and some of it even a week after us. And for whatever it's worth, it causes havoc with, with a teacher who teaches in Waterbury but lives in the district that has the next week off or on, you know? So I'm just wondering where we are with that, if we're, if the state was moving toward a common vacation calendar.
They had regional calendars that were supposed to be delivered by ACES. ACES stopped doing it, I mean, the last one I got from ACES was 2016, 2017. I had searched high and low because I, I thought the question would come up from one of you today. And I wanted to at least have an answer for you, and there's nothing out from ACES as of 1617. So my goal was to look at other districts and make sure that we're in line with what they have. But again, this is a living document, so we could bring this back to you. If we want to make that change in that April break prior to the end of, you know, next week or next month, as other districts are releasing their next year's calendar, you know, we could, that's something we can address and talk about. I mean, we're not set in stone, we looked at the, because of the Good Friday to make sure that we don't lose that extra day. Not lose that extra day, but because of the average of the five, six snow days, you're looking at already, you're towards the end of the month, you don't really have a lot of play in there if you get a wild winter. So if we add another day, the following year, we have a Three Kings Day which falls during the week, that adds another day. We added an extra day to the Christmas break, the winter recess, because it falls in the middle of the week instead of coming back for, just for one day. So there's a lot of different things that we weighed and tried to come up with something that'll work for everybody, but the, the goal was that there was supposed to be a regional calendar that made it easy. We followed the same rules, the same start day, same major recess breaks and all the other holidays they, and, but they stopped doing that, I have no idea why, so.
One, a couple of questions. In terms of keeping kids in school and the continuity, I absolutely agree. I think the more we can stop choppy weeks, the better. And I'm looking at September, you've got two teacher collaborations on the 19th and 26th. Why don't we add that in the front and have the teachers do, you know, come in on the 21st of August and have another full day right there, so we don't have to break up the 19th and 26th? Is that a contractual issue?
No, the, it's the open house, that's why there's early dismissal. So one has PD and the other one, there's no open house for the high schools per se, high schools and elementaries. And the middle school has PD. And then the following week, it's the high school and elementary that have the open house, and the middle school has the PD.
Okay, all right, gotcha, okay, so I misunderstood that. Although I think we have to start looking at the efficacy of these open houses. I mean, if, if we're hearing that, you know, five parents show up, maybe, maybe we have to rethink that, maybe not for this particular calendar, but I really do think that we have to look at that as an issue. If parents are not coming to the open houses, then maybe we should think of another venue or another way to have parent conferences because it doesn't seem like we're getting the attendance that we would like. the attendance that we would like. But anyway, we won't, what? What? Oh, okay. That's all, I mean, I think we've, you've heard our comments about, my, my feeling about the half-day before that long week, I, I think people will just say, oh, it's a half-day, then I won't go the next day. I think, I, I, I think sometimes the more you give them the half-day, so if it's a half-day on that Friday, a lot of people will say, well, I'll just take Thursday off now. It just seems like we have that mentality, if I, you know, well, but then they're going home, and their parents are working, so where are they going? Now we're right back to the babysitting issue, so I don't know, I, I have very mixed feelings about it. I do, I have mixed feelings about it. Anyway, any other comments?
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving right along.
I guess we're up to Melissa Baldwin.
Short and sweet.
Yep, this is one we're very familiar with.
Yes, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'm requesting, I'm requesting that we enter into an agreement for a student intern affiliation agreement with Quinnipiac University for a school psychologist student internship. We currently have one student who is interested in coming to Waterbury, they have already passed their background check and their fingerprinting through a outside agency.
Great.
It doesn't cost us anything, it's for a year at this point.
Awesome. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the revisions to the bylaws of the board. Commissioner Sweeney.
So the committee met, Commissioner Brown had attended a workshop at CAPE where they reviewed the state statute that tells boards of ed's what they're required to do, and in that state statute is a state, statement that says that each board of education shall not later than one month after the date on which the newly elected members take office, elect from its members a chairperson, and elect, elect a secretary of such board, and may prescribe their duties. This board has never had a secretary. When President Brown questioned it with CAPE, they said, they pointed to the statute again and said absolutely. I had questioned it about 10 years ago, and had been told that the position of the Vice President covered that, and the clerk of the board took care of the secretarial portion of it, but in discussing it with CAPE, it became clear that we are in violation of state statute, and do need to change our bylaws to reflect a secretary of the board. So the committee met, and we drafted some language. So, under organization, item A of our bylaws, which you have in your packet, the Board of Education shall consist of the mayor and 10 elected members, six members shall constitute a quorum, the mayor is the chairman ex officio of the board, the members of the board shall elect by majority vote a president, vice president, and the addition to the language would be and secretary. And similar language in B below, which is the organizational board, meeting of the board shall be held at such time as the mayor may direct or on December 1st of each odd-numbered year. The meeting shall be called to order by the chairman. Before acting, the members shall be duly sworn to the faithful performance of the duties of their offices prescribed by law. The board shall proceed to elect by raw call, a, by a majority of its members, present and absent, a president, vice president, and again, the addition is, up to the language is and secretary. And then under the duties under the bylaws, so we have the duties of the president, and the duties of the vice president, and the addition after the duties of the vice president will be the duties of the secretary, and the suggested language for that is point eight, review and report minutes to the board, and point B, in the absence of the chairman, the president, and the vice president, the secretary shall preside at the board meeting. And that was the extent of the changes that were necessary.
And according to our bylaws, we have to have three, three meetings on this, so this would be considered the second meeting?
We have to have two hearings on it, the committee.
Okay, so.
The board has to have two hearings.
So this is the first, okay.
This is the first.
Okay. And, so the next meeting, we will be able to vote on.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, number nine, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. Number 10, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests, and superintendent's notification to the board. Yes, yep.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question on 11, scrolling, 11G, teacher transfers. The bulk of those are, and quite a few of them, in August of 18, I didn't count them, I think it's almost 20, attempts going to permanent assignments. Mr. Brinker, maybe you can answer this, I'm just wondering what process takes a teacher from attempt to a perm?
The process from going to attempt to a permanent teacher is an application through the applicant system and a competitive interview, it's a competitive process. It's not any, your attempt now, you turn into a permanent teacher with a contract.
So what role does our supervisor of talent and professional development play in that?
Actually, right now, she's playing an integral role. She's helped us, helped provide us with certain names, finding people with special certifications, and has helped us fill many jobs. She's also doing the posting for the positions for us at this point. She posts the teacher vacancies in the system for, let's say, a 10-day period of time, and organizes the interviews with the ILDs under the current process.
So she would have had input into this decision-making, to go from temporary to permanent?
Well, they do say from temporary to permanent, but it's really not, they were a temporary, they became a contract teacher, not because they were a temporary, but because they were picked as the best candidate for those positions.
They're not permanent yet, according to this, it says effective August of 2018.
Is that supposed to be 17? No, I think that means August 18th.
Effective August 18?
I think so.
August 18th of 2017? That's what that's trying to tell me?
Yes.
That certainly wouldn't be how I read that.
I agree.
And I don't believe that's a font when you do type.
No, I think you raised a good point, I think it's confusing.
I agree.
You mean that we're in the school as a temp, and then all of a sudden?
When we've seen these bulk things like before, this is usually retroactive, back to the last August.
You're right, yeah.
As opposed to projecting we're going to hire these people in six months.
This was back to the first day of school, yes.
So this should be, I would then retype this as August-7.
I'll have a change to get it to you.
Well, my real question is, the involvement, whatever it is, whatever it is, it's a high number, I know we see it often, but I don't know, I don't recall ever seeing this many. But if it is August of 2017, it took an awful long time to hit our agenda. My real question is the involvement of the supervisor of talent and professional development.
At, at this point, she is as integrated in the system as anyone else that works in hiring.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, there's no executive session, oh, go ahead. You would like an execution, okay, we'll have an executive session. Do I have a motion, do we need a motion to go into executive session?
I need a motion to convene into. Sorry. Motion to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Where would you like us, Mr. Brinker?